This special board meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD will come to order. The time is 5:30 PM. The date is March 5th. And we have a confirmed quorum. To get us started, please join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess also a very timely reminder that today was, is Super Tuesday. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to go out and vote. We'll continue with public comment. Special meeting, so it's specific to the agenda items only. We'll go ahead and get started with Ms. Rosie Perez, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, Superintendent Dr. Carmen, and members of the Board. My name is Rosie Perez, and I am proud to represent the members of West Texas Alliance. I'm here regarding the budget deficit and administrative recommendations to join TRS Active Care. In 2002, Texas created a healthcare plan designed to help small districts provide affordable healthcare coverage for their employees. Since then, about 90% of both small and large districts participate in the program. But in recent years, frustration has grown with the state's support of the program. One key complaint is the state's $75 monthly contribution per employee has remained stagnant while the cost of care has gone up and districts and employees' premiums have doubled. Large school districts like Socorro ISD are able to find and negotiate better plans in their local area. But under TRS, Socorro would not have that option. So if the cost goes up, there is nothing that can be done about it. Our organization has addressed the School Board on numerous occasions regarding several different issues. However, the one common theme in every speech is respect. Respect can be demonstrated in a variety of ways. Respect for your employees would be a comprehensive and transparent survey about something as crucial as healthcare and insurance coverage. Instead, our members said it was narrow and misleading, and it was confusing, and you could not go back to any previous questions once you moved on. Respect for your employees is being transparent with the information by informing them of the actual monthly cost to them for insuring their families. We have been told that switching to TRS would solve the budget deficit for the district and would allow the district to give employee raises. But as you, our School Board members, have acknowledged in previous years, raises that do not offset the cost of healthcare insurance is actually a pay cut. Based on the information that was provided in the TRS video and to our organization, the cost of healthcare insurance would dramatically increase for employees. There are slight variances in out-of-pocket costs when seeing a healthcare provider, but the constant monthly premium could have a detrimental financial impact on families. Will the raises supersede the thousands of dollars per year that the healthcare insurance will now cost employees? Will that be sustainable year after year for the contractual five years on TRS? With all due respect, some of the individuals that are making these recommendations will not even be here to witness the implementation or the effects this change will have on employees. We encourage you, our elected officials, to look at other ways to adjust the budget. I know you have received recommendations, including those that we have submitted. Look at those items and positions that are far removed from serving students on a daily basis and redirect them to best serve students' needs. Respect your employees and their families. They are loyal to this district because of the healthcare benefits. Once that is no longer feasible for them, they have no choice but to seek employment elsewhere. I do not owe you your position or your task at hand. I simply implore you to do the best for kids by doing what is best for employees. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Elena Sermano, please.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Carmen, and members of the Board. Hi, my name is Elena Sermanio, and I am here to speak to you on behalf of TSTA SEA members. I am here to voice suggestions on reducing costs for a district without sacrificing the quality of service provided to our students. We would like to suggest the district takes a deep financial dive into different programs and resources the district pays for and provides. Which ones overlap or have low impact on our educational goals? Programs such as Rethink, ICE Station, Schoology, et cetera. Some, sorry, and the Teacher Resource System, are to name a few. Which ones do teachers really use and need? Is the district buying unnecessary supplies and resources? Some campuses have triple of everything: math manipulatives, clocks, thermometers, money, while others have none. We believe a thorough review of all the district's programs and resources in an area that, in this area, can help reduce costs in our district. We suggest a person or committee needs to convene to audit all of the curriculum programs and resources. Another suggestion is having an early elementary school dismissal. This could allow us to align with nearby districts that have similar scores. The district can save energy consumption and transportation costs. This would ease the shortage of bus drivers for the later routes and activities. Students would have more time to rest and prepare for extracurricular activities. A 245 dismissal can allow for tutoring during teacher duty time, which would help cost, cut down the cost on extra tutoring pay. Students would participate and benefit from an earlier tutoring session as well. Teachers would also have the choice to set appointments after school, which would reduce the extra cost of providing half-day subs. Not only can an earlier dismissal impact the district's cost, but also boost students' and teachers' morale. So these are a few suggestions that we have that hopefully will help you make a good decision on cutting down some costs for the district. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Tommy Hill.
Hi, President Nahara, Superintendent Carmen, for now, and the rest of the Board members. I'm gonna, in 2021 eighty-seventh legislative session, SB 1444 was presented to allow districts to leave TRS after five years. But it's not true. There's a lot of red tape. Once you go TRS, it's like going into the Hotel of California. You can come, but you cannot check out. There's no options for negotiating costs. If prices go up, they go up for district and employees. You gotta deal with it. Once you go TRS, can't go back. The law requires the district and TRS Active Care must have all eligible employees in the program. If an employee cannot afford the monthly premium, are they prohibited from seeking insurance elsewhere? An example, Obamacare. But TRS, they're not gonna allow you to do that. So if you were able to do that, you guys could save plenty, but TRS will stop you from doing that because they'll make you go TRS care. Now, I do know that we are gonna save $335,000. But you cannot do this to our health insurance. Because this was the one thing this district, the main thing, that this district had, has going for it. And we are about to tear that to pieces. Do not let it happen. Thank you very much.
And our next speaker, Crystal Ebby.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Carmen, and members of the Board. My name is Crystal Ebby, and I'm here to speak with you on my behalf as an employee. Before I begin, I just want to say thank you for looking at different ways to improve our district's financial situation. I just want to voice my concern about changing or cutting down our employee healthcare. I'm very concerned should our district decide to choose TRS Active Care because I personally have heard so many negative things about TRS Active Care. I have watched the video HR sent out, and I'm very concerned that this is a bad deal for all employees. The out-of-pocket costs for prescriptions, doctor visits, and the limited coverage makes me worried for my own personal healthcare. If the district were to go with TRS Active Care, I would have to be proactive to prevent myself from using TRS Active Care. I can tell you that I personally would be having to call in even more sick days at the earliest signs of illness. I wouldn't want my symptoms to progress to the point that I would need to use a TRS Active Care and pay the outrageous out-of-pocket fees for urgent care visits or prescriptions. I am just one teacher, but I know others have shared the same thoughts. Personally, in my position as an elementary music specialist teacher, I am exposed to many germs on a daily basis as I service two campuses over the course of two weeks. I already battle asthma and allergies to the point where I have to get weekly allergy shots to help my symptoms, and that does add up. I am sure it would cost even more with TRS Active Care. This year, I have had COVID twice. I have battled bronchitis three times in between my bouts with COVID and had to be out sick more days than I wanted. I am truly grateful for our current Aetna plan, although it isn't what we used to have with STIGNA. I know that if the district decides to go with TRS Active Care, it would personally hurt me financially. I can't imagine what it would have cost me to pay for the numerous prescriptions I needed for each illness I faced just this past year alone if we had to use TRS Active Care. I have been an employee here at SISD for the past 16 years, and I have always felt grateful and proud to be an employee. I have always felt that this district really cared and valued all of its employees. But I feel if the district chooses TRS Active Care, I would be thinking otherwise. I just want to also say that I find it strange that we, there is such a rush to change our healthcare providers, considering the fact that we have an outgoing superintendent. I feel that any decisions that affect all employees should not be made until after we have selected a new superintendent to oversee such decisions. I respectfully ask you to wait on making any decisions or changes to our healthcare plan. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Ms. Ebby was our last speaker, so we will continue with our agenda. That's the Board Workshop and the Fund Balance Presentation. Ms. Perez.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Dr. Carmen. My name is Vicky Perez. I am the Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, we are presenting our Fund Balance Presentation, and this is part two. This evening, we will have several speakers addressing some of the questions that you had in the last meeting, some findings that we've had since then, and then with a recommended proposal. We will see, we will hear from Mr. Escobar, Mr. Carmona, Dr. Starkey, and myself. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Carmen so he can introduce us.
Thank you, Mrs. Perez. Introduction, overview of this evening's agenda. Perez, I don't seem to have a clicker. Thank you. Just as an overview, I want to start by saying that as we work the administrative team, that the perspective we're taking is to start with staying as far away from, as possible, from students, classrooms, and our safety. And we recognize that any legislative session could change the financial outlook for this district and districts across the state of Texas. But I will point out in the last special session called, any additional money for public funding was tied to vouchers and a golden penny yield, not a basic allotment increase. So the impact on districts will vary based on the number of golden pennies we have. As we get going this evening, we are going to address a demographic study that is mostly complete, the student recruitment efforts and enrollment. We have a lengthy presentation on health insurance options. We will discuss some topics from federal funding based on our last workshop. We have some slides to give information on the grant work that is being done in Socorro ISD. We'll give an update on SHARs based on the questions from previous workshop. There will be some discussion regarding budgeting. We spent a lot of time last workshop discussing employee salaries and benefits. This evening, we'll go through a breakdown of other object codes, 6200 through 6400s primarily contracted services, supplies, and employee travel. An update on a possible VATRE. Information on reassigning fund balance. Then we'll wrap up asking for additional information that the Board may want, along with recommendations and setting of a next meeting. With that, I will turn back over to Mrs. Perez.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to introduce Justin Rich. He is with Wolpert. He is the individual, he and his team have done the demographic study for Socorro ISD. They have done it at the district level, and they are currently wrapping it up at the feeder pattern level. Mr. Rich?
Thank you for having me tonight. One moment while I share this presentation. All right, looks like you're able to see my screen there. Thank you again for this opportunity to present our findings regarding the district-wide enrollment projections. Just to start off with the methodology for these district-wide enrollment projections, they're developed using the cohort survival method. And the direct inputs into the projection model include 10 years of historical enrollment by grade and by year, and historical resident live birth counts. Additionally, we reviewed historical building permits within the district and census data as well. The cohort survival method is a widely utilized methodology for projecting K-12 enrollment. And what this methodology does is it uses historical live birth data and student enrollment in order to age a known population from grade to grade, year after year. The percentage of students who move from grade to grade, what we call survival ratios, are analyzed to determine a ratio that is then used to project enrollment. The cohort survival methodology inherently considers a number of different effects, including historical trends in in-and-out migration, housing, dropouts, open enrollment and/or program choice, and transfers to and from charters and private schools. It should be noted that this methodology does not assume changes in policies, program offerings, future trends in housing and migration. This is backward-looking to your recent history or other demographic patterns. Again, the foundation for our projections, yes?
Mr. Rich, I'm sorry, before you continue, just in the interest of everybody watching the presentation, there's someone else on the meeting with you. Could you have them introduce themselves, please?
Certainly. I don't believe that person is here to, is here to speak to this. Rather, I think they're gonna be speaking to a later item.
Yes, sir, they are part of the TRS.
Okay. Thank you. Apologize for interrupting, Mr. Rich.
No problem. So again, the foundation of our enrollment projection model relies on resident live birth counts, and this is based on the mother's residence at time of birth. And that's compiled by ZIP code, so we took that information based on the ZIP codes that are served by the district. So we're able to take those resident live birth counts, correlate that with previous kindergarten, kindergarten enrollment classes. And we expect a relationship for birth year and then five years later. And so we go back and analyze that over the last number of years to determine what percentage of live births that happen within your district then correlate to kindergarten class size. So actual resident live birth counts are available through 2021. We expect that 2022 data will be available shortly. And those are used to project kindergarten enrollment through school year 2026, '27. In order to project kindergarten beyond that to 2033, 2034 school year, we use a simple average of the last three years in order to project those kindergarten classes out. The table and the charts on this slide highlight the number of building permits that were issued in El Paso County, El Paso City, Horizon City, and Socorro City. We review this information. While it's not a direct input into our enrollment projection model, it is important context to understand, based on levels of building permits that are being issued and presumably additional student enrollment that is generated as a result of that, to look how those might affect the cohort survival factors that are used in our presentation. It's important to note that you will have more detailed information. As was mentioned, we are completing other portions of our demographic study, including a student potential analysis. That will be diving into future residential development to a greater degree. And we expect that that will be available by the end of March. As a point of reference and as another qualitative piece of information that we use when reviewing our enrollment projections, we obtained community data from ESRI, which is the industry leader in GIS software, really important to the work that we do. And they have a Business Information Solutions Division. And what they do is they develop their own population estimates based on a number of different community demographic factors using their own methodology. So this is not our enrollment projection methodology. This is not the cohort survival factor methodology. But we find that this is a useful, again, piece of information to look and see, are they seeing some of the same things that we are? Of course, they don't have the benefit of your student data and understanding how that has changed over time. This is really from a community perspective. But what their data shows is that for El Paso County from 2023 to 2028, the total population is estimated to increase by 1.8%. And the school-age population is estimated to increase by approximately 1%. When we take that information and we plot it on this map, we're able to illustrate some of those areas. This is all done by census block. And to identify those areas that are expected to see increases or decreases in school-aged population. Those colors that are lighter, the blue and the lighter shades of blue, indicate that those are areas that are expected to have their student populations decline, while those areas that are shown in red are expected to increase. And there's a legend on the left side of the map that indicates what those colors in terms of the percentage growth or decline that is expected. Historical K-12 enrollment in the district increased by 2,750 students since the 2014-15 school year. We've outlined that enrollment each year going back 10 years and for each grade. And what we've done is we've color-coded the map to identify some of the patterns that are happening within the district and through that student population over the last number of years. So that color coding, what it shows is that the darker red colors indicate higher grade sizes relative to the population here, whereas those blue, those dark blue and lighter blue colors show smaller populations. And I think what we noticed looking at this information is there is a concentration of those larger class sizes in the high school grades currently. And those are being replaced by smaller grades in the early elementary grade levels. Now, that's a pattern that has happened over the last 10 years. And generally, you see an increase in enrollment at the high school level. But we do see decreases just in terms of those incoming grades over the last several years. So the kindergarten classes, first, second grade, and so on. Another important piece of information is related to transfers into and out of the district. Historically, there have been more students transferring out of the Socorro School District than students transferring into the school district. The graph on the left-hand side shows the number of students that are transferring in and out of the district, while the graph on the right-hand side shows the net differential between those transfers in and transfers out. So similar to the historical enrollment that we showed you in that table, we've used that same color scheme here to try and identify those, again, trends that we are seeing. It allows us to be able to track going from one grade to the next year after year. And this is our, this represents our recommended enrollment projection, gathering all of that data, looking through all of the survival ratios, and coming up with survival ratios that we think are appropriate, given all of that information. And what we see is that, based on those trends, we expect that, or we project that enrollment will decrease by about 3,000 students out into the 2033, '34 school year. Again, we are seeing, just based on the table here, we see a lot more of that, those blue shaded colors indicating smaller class sizes as those matriculate through the system, and less and less of those larger class sizes at the high school level. In this table, again, you can track those larger cohorts or class sizes and the smaller cohorts, again, shown in, shown in dark blue and the lighter blue as they matriculate through the system. This table being side-by-side shows both the historical and the projected enrollment over the next 10 years. From a macro perspective, the enrollment decrease is largely attributable to decreasing resident live birth counts and the related factor of larger classes in high school being replaced by smaller elementary classes. Additionally, survival ratios have been trending down over the last several years, which is also impacting the projected enrollment. There are many factors that can influence student enrollment. Enrollment projections should be reviewed annually and updated as appropriate. Enrollment trends shift. And as those things do shift, live birth, as new live birth counts become, you know, become available, because that's such an important driver for the enrollment projections, those should be tracked and monitored and see how those line up to what is projected further out in the projection horizon. Additionally, the COVID-19 pandemic introduced a really high level of volatility. And that's not just in, you know, obviously... And that's not just in, you know, obviously that was nationwide. But as those survival ratios in 2020 and 21, as those sort of move out and there's new baselines that are established, it's important to monitor those closely over the next several years just to see what kind of trends can we expect going forward post-COVID, post-pandemic. That's all I have for tonight, but happy to take any questions and speak to our projections or specific slides that we have here.
Yes, Mr. Rich, we did not receive a copy of your PowerPoint, but I do have some questions. Can you go back to Slide 8?
Is that the slide you're referring to?
Yes, you projected the birth rate out to 2033. Did you do that with the transfers?
We did not project out transfers. Those were held constant. What you will see is that you will see, excuse me, they are not held constant. Those are, those you will see shown in the cohort survival factors. So those have been decreasing as there's higher amounts of students that are transferring out. Does that make sense?
So as you show like 2017, 2018, it shows a negative 4,649. Is that just that year alone?
That's just that year alone.
And then in 2018, 2019, it shows a negative 5,760. That's for that year alone transfers out?
That's correct. So what, what I think that says is that that net, that net loss of about 4,600 students, you would imagine that most of those students in that following year, plus some additional students, would make up that 5,760.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Is it additional or is it still, these are just?
I would view these as cumulative, not-
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is the percentage increase you show, or the decrease that you're showing us losing each year? It is, what's the rate of, you don't have it marked here?
Yeah, in terms of transfers relative to total student population?
Well, just here, because we show a steady increase, you know, 400, 500 students a year that are added on to it. 600 students. And then your 21, 22 cumulative. And we weren't given these numbers to review prior to the meeting. Can we get a copy of this?
Certainly.
I'll have more questions on that. Also, Slide 9, can you go to Slide 9?
Sure.
Okay. And this one shows the birth rate decreasing. But then we'd have to anticipate also the transfers out at the same time to get accurate numbers to project outward. Is that correct?
Yeah, just to be clear, when looking at the kindergarten class size, yes, that is because of declining live births. And those are declining based on what happened five years previous, right? So in the 2019, for instance, during that year, births that happened in 2019 then correlate with the 2024, 25 school year.
Did you have a slide with historical data on the birth rate?
Yeah, that is shown here on Slide 3.
Well, that's by zip code. I'll still need that information, that stuff. So it, the decrease in student population is solely not just on birth rate. It's also transfers out, right? Is that correct?
I think that is certainly contributing to this. There are many different factors that are, you know, part of that, but certainly having a net loss of that many students, and that is increasing, which then is affecting the survival ratios that are used in the projection. And I think just to go back to the projected enrollment slide here, what we also see, for instance, in 2024, 25, you know, we have roughly 15,750 students in the high school grades, and when you look out 10 years based on smaller classes working their way through the system, you end up with a high school class that's about 14,000. Similar things are happening at the elementary and middle school levels as well. So you start to see those students bleed off mostly because those kindergarten class sizes are just smaller than, or we're projecting them to be smaller than they were in the past, and that's directly based on the number of live births.
Okay, one more question. When the demographics, you gave birth by zip code, the building permits, were they by zip code too?
That was for countywide.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, and, and again, while that's not a direct input into, that's not a direct input into the enrollment projection, it's important context just to be able to see if you're seeing survival ratios that are extremely elevated, do you expect that that may continue in the future? Or should you then use a survival ratio that is lower if you're not anticipating that same level of development going forward? Again, I think that, I think that the student potential analysis that you all will be receiving will be really helpful to identify the past and the future and what kind of student enrollment should be expected to come from that.
Okay, that's because you presented it in the data, and I assumed it had to do with the Socorro District, but it's not, right? It's not exclusive?
Correct, yes. But, but it does cover the area served by the Socorro School District, yes.
Okay, no further questions?
I'll get that emailed to you, sir, and then we'll include it at the weekly, in the weekly packet as well.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Rich, thank you for your presentation. Quick question, for the scope of work, will you be providing our district as far as within the scope as far, let's see, charter schools, private schools, other districts, as far as what it looks like for those transfers out? Are we capturing where the students are going and where we're losing them from?
If I understand the question, will we be tracking where students are, if they're going to public schools versus if they're going to private or charter schools? And yes, we have information. It's produced by the American Community Survey that indicates what percentage of those students are leaving the district versus attending schools in the district. So yes, we have that information. We do not have that on a school by school basis. For instance, if there's a parochial school or a charter school and knowing what those numbers are, this is based on information that's gathered by the census and is not specific to those facilities.
Okay, so we'll have it at least district-wide to see where possibly our out-of-district transfers are going to. And then mobility rate, is that part of the scope of work? Will we get mobility rate?
And in terms of mobility rate, can you just clarify what, what we're asking about that?
Yes, for example, for our students, yeah, students transitioning within the district or out and then coming back in, do we have that?
We will have information related to movement within the district and students that are attending, for instance, a school other than the boundary that they reside in and that sort of mobility. We do not have information, and I would imagine the district may have this information of those students that leave and then come back, but that is not something that we have been evaluating. We do, again, have information about within the district, what we call intra-district transfers. And yes, we have that information.
Oh, perfect, because that helps with the planning. The other one that I have is for the ESRI. Do you have a retention rate there as far as number of students born within the area and how many were capturing for that year? I know that usually anywhere below 60 or 70 is something that we should be looking at. Do you have, will that be provided within the scope of work?
In terms of retention rate, I believe we're, are we referring to kindergarten or just at any grade? And if we're talking about any grade, that, that would be the survival ratios. Again, that doesn't track an individual student perhaps, but it looks at the net effect of students leaving and coming into the district, you know, perhaps families that are moving in, you know. So, so we have those net numbers, and those are the survival ratios that we have on a school by school, grade by grade basis.
Oh, perfect, so you will have the projections by school, the live and attend? That's also part of the scope of work?
Yep, that's, that's correct.
Perfect. And then for the single-family, multifamily homes, is that also within the projection as far as are we capturing students from those new builds or are they going elsewhere?
Yeah, and that's part of the student potential analysis, not to confuse this, but that really is a different methodology. It's not statistically based in the same way. But that student potential analysis catalogs all of the development that is expected to occur within the district based on approved or, you know, any sort of project that is in the entitlement phase. And then it also looks at vacant land to assess the likelihood or the viability of that converting to homes in the future and looks at all of that information to the extent it's available, looking at any infrastructure constraints that may affect that development timeline. And then based on all that information, calculating based on what's currently within the district and what kind of student yields are coming from existing homes within the district and applying that to future homes in order to see what kind of student growth could be expected in the future when those new homes are constructed and occupied.
Perfect, that'll help us with our strategic master planning within the next five years. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, when you talked about the county that it's gonna, it's projected to grow 0.9, but like Mr. Castellano said, that's for the whole county, that's not just SISD, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Will you be providing just the area only regarding to SISD so that we, because I mean, I guess when you look at it, it's like, okay, maybe that's a good number, but that's the whole county, but that's not what SISD needs. What SISD needs is the actual number that's going to be impacted positively or negatively or the district. So is there a way to possibly get us that information so it's more accurate?
Certainly, we can, we can provide that information. We can provide that at the census block level, so we can break it down to smaller geographies. What I do want to emphasize is that this is intended as a point of reference. This should not supplant the enrollment projections that we're preparing for you. In our mind, this is helpful to cross-reference and to see that if we're on the right track here or if we're turning up results that are completely different, that begs the question, why? But knowing, having a known population of students as we do for your school district and matriculating those students forward, applying those survival ratios and then including birth data to estimate kindergarten class sizes in the future, in our belief is a much more accurate way of predicting future enrollment. So while this information, I think, is useful and is important as, you know, a logic check, it, it should not be used in lieu of the enrollment projections that we provided.
Okay, and then can we go back to the slide where it says transfer in and out? You only gave us for 22, 23, but I guess at that rates, I mean, I'm looking kind of the tendency and some, some are a little bit higher, but it kind of seems like it averages be somewhere between 300 and 400 every year that we're losing. So we go all the way to 2020 to 2033, and let's just say we go somewhere between the aggregate number of adding 300 to 400 every year. We're looking at essentially 7,000, so we're looking at by that time, 33, we're going to be losing out somewhere between 10 to maybe 11,000 students, correct? Did we follow that trend?
I, yep, I think your math is correct, and that would be the case.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Rich, so in understanding the transfers, is, is the definition of a transfer, is that a student who came to our district, attended our schools and then left? Or is, could it also be a student whose parents happened to move into the district? That student never attends our schools but happens to continue going either to whatever school they were going to before the move or whatever private, parochial, charter school, any? That transfers could include that student as well, correct?
Yeah, and I, I think you're right, and this information is taken from the Texas Education Agency. And so I believe you are correct that this includes students that have opted to transfer out of the district even if they never set foot in a district classroom.
Okay, just looking, I mean, because just looking at the number, it's scary. And so, you know, in spite of the number being scary, well, okay, understanding that, that, that number of students, students that have never attended our schools are incorporated there, okay, now I begin to understand the size of that number. I would assume that also, that as we look like at 2015, by the time we get to, say, 2027, we'll have increases in numbers, but we'll also have the offset of the students who are graduating, so they will fall out of the number, say, by 2027 because, or 2028 because they're falling from that denominator, correct?
Yeah, I would, I think you're correct that that may be the case, certainly.
Okay. All right, and again, this is, this is to supplant or to provide cross-reference, kind of a logic check to the forecast of our enrollment, correct?
Yeah, I, I think this information, what's, what's interesting about it is the trend. And so certainly when we look at that transfer in and transfer out data, we keep our eyes open to how that trend may be changing over time. We see that the raw numbers have been increasing just in terms of that, the number that transfer out. We also see the number of kids that are transferring in are increasing too. There's just still a differential. I think this is an, this is one of those factors that I would imagine is important to keep an eye out over the next several years because that is a large number of students, and that may have, that may change our enrollment projection in the future rather than seeing a decrease in, in student enrollment. Perhaps we're seeing an increase instead because that trend reverses. I think some of the questions that you're raising are important. We don't have that individual, that individual level data. This is compiled by the state, but you might see larger numbers at certain grade transitions. You know, for example, from elementary to middle or middle to high. You know, perhaps there are certain reasons, and I can't speculate all of the reasons that may be. But that is generally what we see nationwide when we look at these sorts of trends.
Mr. Rich, looking at the 2016, 17 numbers, I mean, they both say NA, and I see what the note there and what it advises, however. I mean, looking at 15, 16, and then 17, 18, the note just doesn't seem to make sense. Do you have any insight? I mean, they reported 321 in 15, 16, and then we jumped to 440 in 17, 18 for transfers in. It would seem to me that 16, 17 is somewhere in the middle. It's certainly not going to be a number like 5 or 10 or something like that. So just, do you have any insight as to why that's NA rather than, I mean, the just, I don't know, the note that doesn't make sense there?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We, we don't have that information, and that, that information wasn't available for that year.
Mr. Rich, have you ever seen a school district reverse these numbers through actions, through initiatives, or? through initiatives or, um, just have you ever witnessed a change like that?
Oh, certainly. And I think that, you know, we, we often see changes in that. I, you know, again, there can be many reasons why there, there may be, it could be program related. It could be, um, it could be related to, um, where a parent is employed and the convenience of having, um, their students come to, to a school that's near their work or their place of business. Um, there can be any number of reasons. It could be because of population influx and, uh, you know, I think what you mentioned before, perhaps they're, they're already at another district and, um, you know, they're enrolled and they wanna stay with the friends and they, they have those social connections and things like that. So again, I wouldn't want to speculate as to the reasons why, but certainly we see those trends change. Um, and that's why it's important to, to monitor because up to this point, you've had, um, you've, you've had sustained enrollment growth and that is even when factoring in these transfers. Um, and I think, um, in the future, that will have a big impact on, um, what your enrollment does over time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rich.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Daniel so that he can discuss student recruitment efforts and enrollment.
Thank you, Ms. Betis. Good evening. President Nakara, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Carmen, Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer. Uh, and just to share with you a little bit more information regarding some of the, the things that we've known, uh, regarding recruitment and retention. SISD was the last district, the last major district to update our open enrollment policy. When we first updated our policy, we were already at a deficit of thousands of students transferring out. Uh, it's only been in a handful of years that we have had the opportunity to advertise, to market and promote community-wide to invite students into Socorro ISD other than for specifics, specific circumstances. Also, similar to the discussion that was just taking place, many families, we, we have, we've always believed and known that moved to Socorro ISD but choose to enroll students in the communities that they grew up in and we refer to them as legacies. Uh, if you look at the numbers, uh, the largest outgoing transfer students we know is our neighboring school district, uh, Islaera. It's always historically been that way and it continues to grow. I feel a lot of it is because as we continue to grow our, our new communities, these are families that are coming from our neighboring school districts, but they're maintaining that family legacy. One, uh, they have the ties. The parents went there, grandparents went there, aunts and uncles. Also the convenience, as was discussed, where grandparents maybe provide before-school care, after-school care, or it's on the way home or, excuse me, on the way to work, right? Heading towards, uh, central El Paso. Um, also SISD has always had a high mobility rate and I'm defining mobility, I believe, a little bit different than Ms. Macias in the conversation. What I'm referring to mobility rate is from year to year, we see the net change in our enrollment. A few hundred students grow, growth, uh, or this year, a decline of hundreds of students. Uh, but behind those numbers, the gross numbers are thousands of students that are enrolling or moving into SISD for the first time. Thousands of students every year that are moving out, uh, of Socorro ISD. Again, uh, what we see in enrollment is the net difference of those two. Uh, we have seen and it's shown here in the demographic study that SISD has seen a shift in student populations across the district. Uh, we known, uh, have known and, and with some of the data that was provided there, some of our communities are aging out, if you will. Um, the households, the children that were there have graduated and moved on. However, the homes are still occupied by, um, adults that no longer have, uh, students in our schools. Um, also what we've known and has been a topic of discussion is that charter schools continue to expand within and near our school district boundaries. So some of the things that we've done to, uh, proactively, uh, work on marketing, on recruitment and retention is we have a robust public relations program. We're blessed with a outstanding public relations team. Uh, and we issue information to, uh, our local media, uh, via press releases. This year we've issued some seventy press releases. Uh, the majority, if not every single one of those, has resulted in positive coverage of our schools, our programs, our activities, celebrating the successes of our students and staff. Uh, we engage in media relations. Both Kristi and I, uh, work on a daily basis, maintaining an outstanding relationship with our local media, uh, sources. To date, we've engaged in at least two hundred, uh, inquiries from the media where we are following up on requests and helping coordinate positive coverage, also following up on concerns that may be out there in the community. Some of those inquiries take five minutes to resolve. Some of them take a few days as we're working with our team researching and developing a response on behalf of the school district. Uh, we also have a great video production team. Uh, so far this year, they've produced forty-eight videos, uh, marketing and promoting our school district. In addition to that, seven segments of, uh, TV news. Uh, again, that's covering events and activities throughout our schools. Uh, photo, our photography, uh, we have a great photographer who's been with our school district, uh, for many years. Uh, he's already posted some a hundred and seventy-eight photo galleries this year, uh, highlighting and providing a service to our schools as well. Uh, you know, when he goes out and covers, we always talk about, you know, be the uncle in the room. That's there to capture the moment for every one of our students. Uh, and then graphic design, we have great graphic designers, uh, who work on branding, uh, for our school district. Uh, they've touched over fifteen hundred documents this, uh, school year alone, just supporting our campuses and supporting district initiatives. Uh, we have a great, uh, social media program. Uh, we are in X on Facebook, on Instagram. There's been a couple hundred posts on each of those platforms, again, promoting, uh, marketing, uh, our school district. Uh, we have, um, the largest following on X, the second largest following on Facebook and Instagram, uh, great engagements with our community on those platforms. Uh, when our district updated its policy to open enrollment, we began advertising as well. Prior to, our focus was on our school boundary only. Uh, now, uh, we're advertising on TV, radio, outdoor billboards, uh, direct mail pieces, digital streaming platforms, social media platforms, uh, special events. Um, and again, all of that advertising, all of the materials, all the contents, I'm proud to say is developed one hundred percent in-house. Uh, school programming is another, uh, part of marketing, though it's not necessarily under, uh, public relations, that is offering student opportunities at the high school level and now with our new elementary academies, uh, providing new opportunities, provides us, uh, marketing points and, and promotional points for, uh, our community. And door-to-door, uh, I know that was a topic of conversation during our workshop last time. We had done the stand and deliver outreach. Uh, we made a decision as a leadership team to, uh, move away from that. We felt that that, it has ran its course. We first initiated a stand and deliver, I don't know, some six years ago, five, six years ago, prior to COVID, we had over thirty-five hundred volunteers. The last time, uh, we had a stand and deliver outreach program, seventeen hundred volunteers. We were, uh, getting information and preparing the potential of doing a similar outreach again last year. The number was far less than that. Uh, so we did, uh, did an informal survey with our campus leadership teams and they felt it was best to invest in other programs, uh, versus continuing that outreach. So it was a great outreach, um, but we felt and, uh, that it's ran its course. So we've moved that investment into other, uh, outreach that we're doing. So looking at results and looking at information, and this is related to exactly what was presented, uh, in the screen there, uh, we looked at, as I mentioned, um, starting off from the very beginning, when we went to open enrollment, because of, uh, legacies, um, our numbers are larger. They always have been larger. But if you look at it, uh, I looked at the TA reports, uh, that are available, our school district together with the other large school districts in the area, uh, and the latest reporting is available through last school year. Uh, so looking from twenty twenty, twenty-one through twenty-two, twenty-three, SISD has had more transfers in net over that time period. So after COVID, SISD has had more transfers in than our other large school districts in our area. And in the bottom half of that, we've had fewer transfers out. So our numbers, the base remains large, but looking at, uh, the outreach and the difference of the impact over the last two years of reported information, the change has been again, more transfers in, uh, and fewer transfers out. And then again, looking at the, the slide that was just presented now, since twenty-seventeen, eighteen to now, the increase of transfers in has been a thousand students or roughly a thousand students. Yes, sir.
Mr. Escobar, I heard what you just said and I'm reading what it says on the slide. When I look at the table, it transfers in, say for twenty twenty-three, it says SISD has fourteen sixteen and YIS, YISD has fifty-two hundred. So how can, help me understand how Socorro has more transfers in when we have just over fourteen hundred and YISD has over fifty-two hundred?
I'm talking about the net change over that time period.
Okay. I getcha. Okay. And, and, and so the same applies for the table below and transfers out. You're talking about the net change from period to period, not across
Net totals.
The individual column comparing school, uh, uh, district to district, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So information, what we know now with, uh, information supported by the demography study, SISD again is no longer a fast growth, fast growth school district. SISD in fact will face declining enrollment over the next ten years. Uh, and a slide that was not included in the demography study, but will be in the report that you receive, uh, they also tracked, um, birth rates to, from children that are born in our community that end, end up enrolling five or six late, five or six years later in kindergarten, um, or first grade. That number is less than seventy percent. So again, those students are in our community. Some are mobile, have moved in, moved out. Others are in our community but have never enrolled in our schools. Um, likely, uh, we believe many of them never had the original intent of enrolling in our schools because of their famas, family legacies for one possible reason. Uh, less students are moving in. So we talked about the mobility rate. Uh, this is just a table showing the total number of, uh, new students into Socorro ISD over last recent years, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-one, six thousand two hundred twenty-three. Uh, it went up a bit, dropped back down currently this year, uh, or at least as a couple weeks ago, it was five thousand one hundred and eighty-nine. So again, uh, it's not necessarily the, uh, students that are living here, uh, exiting. It's also, uh, just the fact that we are not having as many families or as many students move into our communities. Uh, also, we do know, again, this year, the TA data is not out, but we do know that we are losing a, a larger number of students, uh, and specifically at the secondary. Uh, the presenter earlier talked about transition years from fifth to sixth grade, elementary to middle school, eighth to ninth grade, from middle school to high school. Um, and we believe a lot of this has to do with, uh, safety concerns, uh, within our community. Um, being in a large school with two thousand, uh, other students, uh, et cetera. And some of the areas I'd mentioned, Islaera ISD, uh, has a large number of students, but emerging, um, we know that the primary charters, Harmony, IDEA, uh, but at the secondary level specifically, uh, there's a new leadership academy off of Joe Battle, uh, and then Harmony has expanded to offering, um, secondary options, uh, there on Joe Battle as well. So looking forward, uh, what we will continue to do to market to our community is continuing with our robust, uh, marketing program, including our public relations, social media and advertising. Uh, we will continue to adapt our messaging and targeting, uh, focusing more on safety. What's on the screen there is our All-In For Safety webpage that was launched over the winter. Uh, we'll have a lot more of marketing, uh, information to share, uh, with our community regarding the vast safety protocols that are in a, in place and the great people that we have that are implement, implementing those protocols. Um, also looking at targeting the zero to three-year-olds, young families. How can we break that legacy? How can we, uh, have them, encourage them to build a new legacy in Socorro ISD? Uh, we will seek and continue to seek to learn from, uh, families choosing to enter, exit the school district. We recently launched, uh, an AI, uh, survey tool or interview tool where we're looking to learn from our families again as to why they're making the decisions both to exit the school district as well as choose to enroll in the school district. We are working to identify and pursue new marketing opportunities. Uh, as an example, just today, we started marketing with the El Paso Zoo. We know there's a lot of young families that'll be there over spring break, uh, and going through the summer times. Uh, we know a lot of, uh, families with newborns like to go and walk and have exercise there. So again, looking for new opportunities to engage with and, and communicate with, uh, young families. Uh, and another thing that we are looking at developing, um, and we do not have a full-fledged plan at this point, is, uh, a direct marketing team, uh, where, uh, we will have an educated team that will help us engage at a personal level, uh, via phone calls, uh, possible door-to-door visit, but very targeted, um, and also out in the community at special events. Another piece related to this is what we are looking at reviewing and refining existing systems to help parents register and not only register, but just to provide excellent customer service. So we want to bring them into the door and we want to help them, uh, close the deal, if you will. Uh, we are looking to continue to innovate and provide new school programming opportunities. Again, that's vital, uh, and making sure that we offer, uh, great choices and great opportunities for our students. And then the last piece there, uh, is ensure students not only enroll but attend school every day. So were we looking at bringing back an attendance initiative again and discussing, uh, how we can, um, work and encourage our families to ensure that their students attend every day? Cause it's not only enrollment that drives funding, but it's, it's ADA and their attendance.
That's all the information I have. And next is Mr. Carmona.
Mr. Now, I have a couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Escobar, you mentioned on our walks that we had, we had thirty-five hundred that volunteered in seventeen hundred. I guess the most important question is how many kids did we pick up? I would, I would look at that instead of the volunteers. And I like the idea about targeting because we also have so many charter schools in our districts.
Yes, sir.
I want to know how many charter schools we have in our districts compared to other districts. And then when they do the transfers ins and outs, when the students transfer, don't they tell us where they're headed to? And if they do, that's when, that's when we have to target. So targeting those kids, targeting those students, that's the easy one. If they're going to Islaera because their parents worked or they're going to IDEA or to Harmony School, those are the kids that we gotta target. But I think targeting the school, I think it's going door-to-door to those schools, that's what we need to do. And the years back, we were in front of the Walmarts, in front of the Ideas. We need to continue doing it because that's where we're gonna get those kids. We could do all the advertising we want, but if you don't go door-to-door to the students, we're not gonna bring them back.
Yes, sir. I agree with that. And so those efforts were retention efforts, right? We knew that IDEA was new to our community and we went and knocked on the doors of students we already had, essentially encouraging them to stay, uh, and that to fall for the, the pitch of IDEA. Uh, and so the direct marketing team that I'm looking at is, uh, exactly to do exactly what you spoke of, but more consistently, um, and with individuals that, uh, can carry a second, third level conversation and then help carry through. Uh, those were great activities, but the follow-through in, in hindsight wasn't completely there from our end. Uh, so that's what we're looking to improve.
Cause it, it doesn't really cost us a lot of money to, to get out there. I mean, it's an inexpensive way, I guess, of marketing our district and, and I, I, if I have learned anything, the, the power of going door-to-door and the sincerity that comes with that conversation and asking questions and answering questions is very powerful. And I think that if, if there's a lot of misinformation about what these charter schools can provide, and I think if we as ISDs went or as a district went out there and promoted our district and offered them with information, I think it would be very helpful. So I, I personally would like to reconsider the door-to-door because I would be the first one volunteering to do that because I know that it's very, very impactful. Um, and my only other is, is just a quick question. Last year, I know that we did some ads, um, in collaboration with the I, other ISDs. Um, do we plan to do that just to promote ISDs?
We had some continuing conversations of, there is a statewide network, Go Public. Uh, it was started out of San Antonio, specifically with San Antonio ISD. We've had some conversations of partnering with them, uh, but to be honest, it, it hadn't, uh, it, it stalled a little bit. Uh, so it's something that we'll definitely bring up. Uh, it, we didn't move away from it. It just kind of stalled as all the districts, uh, pulled off into their own, you know, individual efforts. Uh, but it's something that, a conversation that will continue.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Getta, you reminded me of something and I looked over and I saw one of our amazing PIMS leaders. Do we still have a list of as students are leaving, like Mr. Getta said, we know exactly where they're going? In the past, I know our campuses would receive that list and just periodically, you know, call them, hey, are you ready to come back? We have a We have a space for you. Are we still doing that internal effort to make sure that we're bringing them back before the, you know, winter purge where they throw them out?
Not consistently. And so again, and I think all of it is just, that's where we are looking at this direct marketing team to help make it consistent, to help make sure that the individuals are dedicated to this and have information that they can follow through. That has not happened to the level that it had happened before.
Yeah, and it's just that TLC, that if families know that, you know, we want them here, they might try something else, but then they come right back home.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scovar.
Yes.
You talked about your marketing campaign. How do you define the quality of education here in the Socorro Independent School District? How do you advertise that to the people? You know, the problem, you know, we have is, you know, they see the board meetings. Competition is like, that's America. Who can do, provide the best quality of service for their child? You talked about Harmony, you talked about IDEA, now we got it, on the way in, I just saw a huge billboard across from the SAC advertising Isleta, bring your kids over. How do you overcome that? How do you, how do you bring that and, and advertise that to the kid that we're the best bang for the buck? That we do what's right, but when we show that, when we show that we have to outsource our, our certain parts of our, our teaching staff or it's long-term subs, we have to ask for more class, more students per classroom. How do we get that out of their head and put, we are the best district or we're a better district? How do we do that? Well, you can go door-to-door all we want, but it, the child is there, you know, they want the best for their child. How do we say that's Socorro?
That is the challenge, sir. That is the challenge. And what we do, what our focus is on is celebrating the successes. We have amazing employees, we have amazing students who are accomplishing great things every single day. And so our focus is to highlight those successes, highlight what they're doing, how we differentiate ourselves to great sort, great programming opportunities. Like I mentioned, those 70 press releases, those social media tweets are defining and highlighting the things that our teachers, that our students are accomplishing every single day. So on the public relations side, that is a major aspect of it and had been the primary aspect, right? Is putting out the information, telling the story of our school district. The advertising is supporting, it's a lot of branding, showing, you know, we have our campaign of the right choice, endless opportunity and seize your opportunity. And again, the focus of that is that Socorro ISD is the right choice and encouraging students and families to seize their opportunities in our school district, whether it be through our outstanding athletics, our award-winning fine arts, our academic programs, and again, showcasing the students that we recognize here at the board meetings, the student spotlights that we feature every month of those students who are doing remarkable things or trying to help our community identify and see themselves, see their children and the success of our children is what we're doing. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just other districts can do the same thing. How do we become that shiny house on the hill again? That's the big thing. And we got, we're going to go through the rest of this package today and it's not going to be pretty.
Right.
You know, and we have to tell the people, well, keep your kids here. You know what, when I campaigned, I ran into a lot of people who said, I wasn't, I will not put my kids in Socorro. And I said, well, you know, just give us a shot, let us try. And can I go back and tell them? Yes, it's hard to because I've seen a lot of stuff that needs correction. I'll give you a person example. My son went to Mountwood High School and I came, I even asked him, this close, he came this close to moving him to Hank's High School because the band booster stole $70,000 and it took away from the, the children, that was his senior year, it took away his Band of America trip. And you can't replace that. And I asked him, you just want to finish at Hank's? And I was ready to pull my child out of the district and he just said, no, I'm just going to finish it here. You know, one of the heartbreaking things or the sad things is that when, when we approached the principal at the time and, and when we had the meeting, my wife asked him, well, what's going to happen? And he just blew her off like, no, 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 it already happened, just deal with it. And that's stuck in my head, you know, and it's like, how do you overcome that and say, well, we're going to be that shiny hill? We, we have that for the kids and we can do better when we were told that, when, when something that drastic happened to, you know, my own son.
And unfortunately, sir, again, that, that is our challenge. People gravitate, people hear the negative things much louder than the positive things. So our focus is to flood the network with positive. Again, we have 7,000 employees, 47,000 some odd students. Unfortunately, individuals make mistakes, but they are not reflective of the majority. So our goal and our focus is to remind the people of all the great work that, again, our teachers, all of our staff is doing day to day. I also will share one way that we measure is, and I'll humbly say it, is through awards, right? Is we submit ourselves, our work to statewide and national organizations of our peers to have our work evaluated, to have our work judged and compared with other districts across the state. And our team are, has been extremely successful. Our advertising programs won three best category across the state. This is SciFair, Houston, Dallas, your largest school districts across the state. Our team, the team that we have consistently wins great awards for their work. And I will say, for the third time, our team won the top state communication award for school public relations. The first time, 2018, 2019, the award was won for Right Choice for Endless Opportunities campaign and the work that we did surrounding that campaign. Three years ago, we won that same award. And again, this is one award given to one district every year. The vast majority of school districts have not received that award. We've received it three times. The second time was for our work and our communication efforts supporting our community through COVID. And then most recently, just last week, the team was recognized with that same award for its work marketing and promoting school choice in Socorro ISD, the advertisements that we've done surrounding our academies. So again, that is one measure that we have, but you're absolutely right. I mean, advertising, it's subjective, it's harder to tie it to the final numbers. You know, if you drive and you see an ad for Coca-Cola and you stop at the gas station and you buy a Coke, you know, Coca-Cola can't tie that directly to that one billboard, but it's accumulation of everything that, that, that you do. So again, the entry for those awards is a way for us to gauge how we're doing, how our messaging, the development of our messaging and the application of our messaging, how it stacks up against other districts across the state. And again, our goal and our effort is to outshine the negative with the positive because every single day there are hundreds of positive stories. I wish we could tell them all, but that's our goal.
And I agree, we should get it out there more, but I think the true measure is reversing that ever-increasing trend of transfers out, you know? 10,000 here in the next couple of years, it's
Yes, sir.
It seems like this district has peaked and we're going to start going a downward trend, you know? It's not too long before we're landlocked and we'll be facing the same thing that Isleta has, but
So that is
That downward trend continues, it's, we have to adjust our thinking completely.
Right, and, and it's all of us, sir. It's all of us moving, moving forward and engaging and supporting our school district in our daily conversations from, again, from every staff member to our office who has a microphone for the school district, who has a megaphone to really amplify those messages.
I just wanted to, to thank you and congratulate your PR team for the amazing accomplishments and the hard work that you do.
Me as well, Mr. Scovar. I believe it was seven awards and eight?
There was more than that, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When do we recognize you all? Do you all want to stand there and we'll announce your name?
We'll read out the list in our regular board meetings, sir. We're blessed with a great team.
You know, enrollment is one aspect, of course.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, based on the information that we've received so far, certainly it's the actions that we take, that we take that, that make the difference, not the actions that PR takes by themselves. It starts at the top. It starts, and grassroots efforts start at the top. If we want to end the negativity, that starts with all the people that stand and sit, I'm sorry, right up here. We need grassroots efforts. We need to be the ones who are knocking on those doors, convincing the people why they need to come to our district. We need to be the ones who are celebrating our successes. We need to be the ones out there communicating to the people who we are supposed to represent. What are we going to do to get better, to listen to what we're doing wrong? We need to understand that, you know? When, when, when we do not appear to recognize what is important in spite of being told time and time and time again to the employees who serve in this district, who then serve our students, how are they going to trust us then with their children to educate them? No matter how hard you all work, no matter how many times we celebrate, and if we can't do that with the employees who are serving and working in this district, how are we going to convince the community? Grassroots starts with us. Thank you, Mr. Scovar.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not done. So I'm going to challenge you and the rest of the district, right?
Yes, sir.
So I do have two kids that are outside in another ISD. Convince me first, convince me why I should bring my kids back because it started from the, from the dais all the way to the classroom. So I challenge you guys to convince me to bring my two kids back. And you're absolutely right, it starts from up here. I've always said it too, it starts from leadership, but when they negatively affect it from up here all the way to the classroom, convince me why I should bring them back.
Our message to the general community, sir, is, and what we, when we did our outreach, we feel our teachers are the best, our schools are the best, they provide the best service. Our students and our community are best served in our hands. That's our message, sir. That's our message.
Thank you, sir. No other questions?
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Nogeda, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. My name is Mario Carmona, I'm Director of Human Resources, Overemployment Benefits and Risk Management. For this part of the presentation related to health insurance, I'll introduce Mr. Clayton Isam from TRS Active Care.
Thank you all very much for the time tonight. We, I am your local representative for all of the active care plans for Region 19. Also on the phone, we have, virtually, we have Yeme. She is a part of TRS in Austin and is going to go over a presentation for you on the value of TRS. And then I'm going to speak on a few things. In front of you, you do have a good amount of marketing materials that we will be going over a little bit on, but it does give you a little bit more in-depth to, to go into while we're going over the presentation. So at any time, if you do need to have a question, please, we would be happy to, either myself or email on the phone to answer those for you and then obviously sometime at the end for you as well, okay? But I'll turn it over to her, she's more than welcome to start, and then if there's anything that y'all need, I'll be right here.
Evening, trustees. It's so interesting listening to the discussion. I'm so pleased to meet you guys virtually and my name is Yeme Zhao. My position is a Senior Director for Finance. I, I'm the financial person, I'm not a salesperson, so I'm not here to sell TRS Active Care to you, but I'm here just to provide information about TRS Active Care so that you can make educated decisions for your districts. And I have about 20 slides, I'm going to go through them very quickly, but feel free to stop me anytime when you have questions or you can wait until the end. Really love your, want to have interactive discussion with you to answer all your questions. So, next slide. Okay, so on this slide, we, we put there staffing challenge, but hearing your discussion, staffing challenge definitely is not the only challenges faced by Socorro ISD, budget is definitely another challenge here, and I'll talk more about how active care can help. When you think about the health program of TRS, really, we are a insurance company embedded in a state agency. And I would say that this program is a very budget-friendly program and is very well managed and it's custom-made for educators because we only provide insurance for teachers, for staff, educational staff on campus. So that's what we do. And then also some, I think Mr. Hill referenced SB 1444, and that offer you flexibility to join or leave TRS Active Care. I do want to make one correction, leaving active care, it's pretty straightforward in my view, when you meet the five-year rule, the first year of 1444, we had more than 100 school districts left TRS Active Care. You are more than welcome to talk to them, share, to get more information about the leaving process, pretty straightforward there. Another correction that I want to make is that TRS Active Care, we don't force anybody to buy into the program. In fact, that we have a lot of spouses who choose to, some of the employees, not everybody buy TRS Active Care. If there is other available, like employee may be covered by their spouse's policy. So that's totally permitted, permitted. I just want to make a correction there. I'm going to move on to the next slide. Let's talk about cost and why is TRS Active Care cost effective? So we hire Melman to do an annual survey where we compare our plan cost to similar plans across the state by using primary plan, which is one of our plan. As an illustration, our plan cost is 14% lower than similar plans. And just like any other plans out there, healthcare costs rises every year, so does our plan cost. And, but our cost trend is only 50% of the cost trend that you've other plans that's out there in the market. So, and, and why are, we are able to keep costs so affordable? One is because state funding. You probably heard us throughout our presentation, we received federal funds to, for, to reimburse the plan on COVID cost. And then from the ATA legislative session, we also received funding to help teachers, educators in our plan to ease their financial burden. So those are, one, that's one reason that we're able to keep the cost low. Another reason is our vigorous plan performance, literally we stay on top of all the issues. We don't just outsource the plan, let it run, we watch every single claim, high-dollar claim, everything that's coming through the plan. So that's the two main reasons that we were able to keep the cost very, very competitive. And I also want to say that, you know, if you think about a plan that somebody can get from the market, the carrier can keep a profit margin as high as 15%. But then when you look at our plan, every single dollar of a dollar we collected from districts, 97 cents are being used to pay for somebody's benefits. Only three cents are being used to pay ourselves, hire consulting firms, do all the administrative works that need, that are needed to run the plan. There's so many fraud-based abuse control edits, you name it, to help us keep the cost very affordable. And I said that, you know, before SB 1444, we have more than 1,000 districts in TRS Active Care. Today, we have Today, we have about 80%, 80% of those employers in TRS Active Care. We had a large exit in the first year of SB 1444. We're coming to the second year, which is August 31st, this coming August 31st. We probably only have one school that's going to leave us, but then we have 10 schools joining us. And Clayton ISD is one of the biggest one that joined TRS Active Care. We are very proud of the slide, so we're going to put it here. Every year, we have 6,000 babies being born from our plan, so we're very proud of the program. And this slide really summarized some of the key points for TRS Active Care. Again, as I said, TRS Active Care is very budget-friendly. Once we set the premium in the springtime, like this year, we're setting premium in the May board meeting. Once we set the premium, that is all you pay. There's nothing like end of the year, putting several million of dollars in fusion into the healthcare fund, nothing like that. That's all you pay, once we set the premium. And then you don't need to buy stop-loss, because of the plan size, we are our own stop-loss. And I think the third way, I would not call it discount, because people always say, discount of what? So when we go out shop for medical carrier PBMs, we look at net cost of every single unit of medical services or pharmacy services. And admin costs, nobody can compete with us. Re-stability, I talk about, you know, we do trend like other plan, but our trend is very low in comparison to other plans. If you, healthcare program costs you $56 million in a year, end of the year, you put in $10 million just to pay all the runoff claims, then you're trending 18%. We would never trend that way. The last three bullet, I think I'm going to touch on that on later slides. Starting from Plan Year 2023, we started regionally rate TRS Active Care. So the entire state, entire state is cut, divided into 20 regions, like you see in the picture here. And we consider different factors, what's listed here, when we set the rates for each region. SocarISD is in Region 19, and this area is below our state reference, healthcare cost-wise. So for the current year, Socar, Region 19 is 10% below the state reference. I talked about the state funding infusion from the 2088th legislative session that's going to help pay for premium for '24 and '25. And so there is another infusion before this that's due to the COVID cost incurred by TRS Active Care. And TRS, we are, as a state agency, we are prohibited by law to do any lobbying. We cannot advocate, put more money into the Active Care. We cannot do that. But we are your pension system. We have all the compensation information for every single teachers in the pension program. So whenever we were asked to provide teacher information for any legislative actions, we share very accurate picture. So I think that may have contributed to the fact that we got additional funding from last session. We'll continue to do that. So all plans, regardless of size, at some point, is going to have higher cost claims. It's just a matter of time. It could be caused by preemie babies, could be caused by a severe car accident. A few years ago, they paid one claim for $30 million to, for a gentleman who were in a very severe car accident. It could be transplant, it could be cancer, it could be gene therapy. There's a ton of new therapy in the pipeline that are being approved, and they are very, very costly. Not only we spread the financial risk across the state, we come up with solutions with our size and skill. You see the aggressively managing healthcare cost? That's what we do. We do that not by cutting benefits. We do that by watching what's being paid as a claim. What medication is being added on the formula just to earn the PBM rebate? We do that to squeeze in administrative cost so that we stay efficient. We do that through cutting waste and abuse out of healthcare system. And then we leave value in the plan to pay for two healthcare services. This is some of the highlighted services that are covered by our plan. But there's, there's a lot more. It's a fully ACI compliant, comprehensive health and pharmacy benefits. As I mentioned earlier, we are like a small insurance company embedded in a state agency. So these are the teams made up of this little insurance operation in a state agency. We have the best team. We have financial people like me. We have clinicians. We have data scientists. We have great certified healthcare buyers who get the best product at the lowest cost for our members in the plan. And for schools in TRS Active Care, we support them in many different ways. We have some position called District Ambassador. They are provided by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, also by Express Scripts. So they are here to serve districts. They answer to benefit administrators for people who cannot access their medication or trying to find a physician, or for whatever reason needs to raise a concern. So they are the connection between TRS and the school. But then every single district are more than welcome to reach out to us directly. I'm personally connected with several schools and love to support them. And then we also have some position called Benefit Administrator Advocates. These people are provided by our enrollment company, B-Swift. They help schools to make sure that eligibility files are coming accurately. People who needs to be added, somebody get hired mid-year, they are added to the benefits on time. And then lastly, not lastly, there's more, but on the screen, we have some position called Personal Health Guide. They're the ones from Blue Cross that people calling to say, how do I find my primary care physician? How, what's my specialist? And this may benefit cover this and that. So this is just some highlight, but we support districts in many different ways. We, between, I mean, among us, Blue Cross and Express Scripts, we send out a ton of information, mostly are through email, through text, through posters, because healthcare, no matter how much we negotiate the unit cost, the quantity, how many units of healthcare we use also plays big part into the total cost of care that we have to pay. So educating people, be better healthcare consumers, knowing where to see healthcare is crucial, which is why we communicate a ton through different ways that you're seeing here. But the best way to communicate with participants are through the employers, because they hear from you the best. And here's something interesting. So what you're seeing here is our Plan Year 24 benefits for Region 19. So we have three plans that we're, that are open for selection. The first one is a primary plan, which is, the primary plan has a lower deductible, but also have copay for doctor visits. So you don't see the premium here, but I'll tell you for Region 19, the premium for a single employee is $388. That's for the first one, the primary plan. And then the next one is a primary plus plan. I think some of our people came out a few days ago. They told me that the primary plus plan is similar to your base plan. So this plan is priced at $455 per employee per month. Lastly, is the HSA Qualified High Deductible Plan. It does a higher, it does have a higher deductible, but it's, it has out-of-state benefits. So this plan is priced at $403 for a single employee. And I think the next few slide, we're just going to highlight a few services that are covered by our plan. Of course, we hear mental health care need in the rise. So we make sure that we have enhanced benefits in the plan for people seeking mental health services. And then we have Preventive Care Week, that's always free of charge for anybody to use. We encourage everybody, do their annual screening, do whatever needed for care themselves with their, through their PCP every single year, no cost to patients. The wellness program is supported by Blue Cross of Blue Shield of Texas. There are different ones, and Clayton can share more information whenever you need it. And then we have Blue Point Program, which is another wellness-related program where people can do wellness, earn points, and do shopping online to get the prices they need from the program. And we have, you know, teachers, heavily female population, I think we have 67% female population in the plan. Maternity care is crucial, so we have enhanced maternity program in the plan to support our female friends. And a few money-saving ideas that we push out every year. This is just something we communicate every single year, because we have, you know, teacher attorney over every year. Like, where do you seek care? You can use virtual healthcare, you can use primary care, urgent care, different, different set of care. If I just have a COVID test, I need to run a COVID test. If I go to ER room, I get the same service, but the bill is much higher, probably somewhere between $500 to $1,000. If we don't educate our teachers to use the right set of care, we are wasting plan resources. So this is just illustrating how to choose the best care for ourselves. And other things we have through Blue Cross Blue Shield is that the provider finder, there's a cost estimation component in there. Like in healthcare, shopping for healthcare is no different than shop on Amazon. You don't purchase anything without checking the price, right? Same thing. Do the due diligence, price it out, and have a good discussion with your provider before you make that decision. And then this is another program where we call it member reward. You literally can shop where you get the care, and between the differences between provider A and provider B, we will deposit some dollar saving into the account for that member, and then that dollar can be used for pharmacy vision of healthcare-related cost. But there is a cap, $5.99 a dollar cap. Think, this is my last slide.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Yeme. I appreciate it. And basically, the programs and everything that she went over, there are nine other district ambassadors, like myself, across the state. And we come around and we actually present this to teachers, employees, staff multiple times a year to inform them and to re-educate them on all of these additional tools that everyone has at no cost to them. Again, this is no cost to them and can earn them $600 a year. Blue points, you can, just by putting in your physical, you're able to get $2,500. I bought some golf balls the other day, and that was totally free just from me putting in what my A1C was. So things like that. We have discounted gym programs, et cetera. So we go around and we actually educate everybody on what plan is best for them and those additional programs that we have available at their disposal. Again, a couple of additional things that I wanted to say. So first, the past year, we got, in the legislation, we got $586 million. And that is why we have been able to stay so steady and below the state average in regards to what all of the other outside of active care plans have been able to do. We have been on, this area has had a regional rate of a negative 4%, meaning that since we have gone statewide, we have seen that Region 19 was being overcharged when we had a statewide plan, the statewide rate by 4%. We have gone above and beyond that. Since 2022 through 2024, as of right now, the primary plan has gone down 9% across the board. The primary plus plan has gone down 12.4% across the board. And the HD plan has gone down 8.15% across the board since instilling the state, the regional rate. In regards to the plans and how everyone, not everyone, but there were a few comments. The primary care on the primary plus plan is less than your premier plan. The telemedicine costs are less than all of your plans. It is free for Teladoc on the mental side. It is free for ReadyMD, and it is only $12 for the primary and primary plus on the medical side. Additionally, we have the five-year commitment that I talked about. That is so that these rates stay stable, and that is mandated by the state. And that's one of the reasons why they gave us that money, because they knew that the rate was going to be stable because of the people having to stay in. After that five years, as Yeme said, you can do what you want. It is just a commitment for that five years. Last, your current plans that you have, they have a portion of them that is a closed plan. Y'all have an ACO on that. Looking at this area within 30-mile radius, they have, we have all of the Providence, we have the Trans Mountain, we have Providence East. We also additionally have access to 1,029 family practice, general practice, internal medicine, obstetrics, gynecologists, specialists. We have over 400 within that same period dermatologists. We have cardiovascular hematologists, oncologists, 35 different hospital systems. So just saying that, your plans were the ones that are going to only go to Providence. We have open plans. Providence is included in that. They have all of these available to them at their disposal without having to do anything additional. And then lastly, rates in regards to just employee-only, just doing a little bit of math there. The primary plus plan, which is the one that we would probably go to as your, your premium, your premier, I mean, taking aside what you guys are charging and what you are contributing, it would be a savings and zero cost to the employee on employee-only, a savings of $280 per person for you. Now, for the primary plan, which would be basically the equivalent of your base, again, zero cost to the employee if you did employee-only, and it would save $247 per person. And then again, also with the HD, you're looking at $202 per person. Now, this does also go in regards to when it starts going to family and employee plus spouse, et cetera. Those savings stay similar. And then last, in regards to everyone saying, not everyone, but the few comments of stay away, I'm currently talking to San Elizario. They have asked for rates. So they are beyond the just exploratory phase to join. Canutio, we are still talking to as joining. And then El Paso ISD, who did leave for five years, has already approached us before the end of the five years to see if there is some legislation for them to come back, because they did realize that it wasn't greener on the other side. So, thank y'all. We'll open for questions now.
I just want to add one thing. Thank you so much, Clayton. On this chart, I think I was showing you the three plans and also quoted you the price that for each plan, some of the comments earlier on is that for, to join Active Care, the cost would increase. And just one correction, the premium, let's say, primary plan for employee only, we charge $388. That is a gross. that is a gross premium. Because TRS, we only set gross premium. Once our Board of Trustees set the gross premium, we passed the premium rates to the district. And then Board of Trustees Superintendent, you're the one to make decision on how much you want to buy down from the gross premium. If our premium is four hundred dollars, you can decide to buy down the whole thing, make it free for your employee, you can buy it down to employee and spouse or, or children, or however you do it. That decision is with you. TRS does not impact the price that employee pays, we only set rates for gross premium.
For the region and then you are able to tailor those.
Right.
If you would like to make everyone to push everyone to be employee only, you can make that. If you would like, you can do your analytics, we just saw the analytics on the makeup of, uh, of, of families. Uh, if there is, is more in this district that is employee and spouse or employee and child, but no spouse, you're more than welcome to tailor those, uh, contributions as you see fit to, uh, help out your districts.
And some, some thing that other school have done, just want to put it out here for the money they saved is, um, you know, encourage people to kick time off, do wellness and rewarding people who achieve certain goal with some time off. And they have seen really positive outcome from that. So there's a lot of things you can do with the money saved.
Questions, yes?
Yes, I did. Uh, based on our public comment, one question that was asked, I know that you all mentioned savings, but what is the monthly cost for insuring children and families, an actual dollar amount? I think that was one thing that was asked.
Yeah, so, uh, with the the employee and family for primary is thirteen twenty. The employee and family for primary plus is fifteen oh two. And the employee and family for the HD plan is thirteen seventy-one.
So right now, I'll ask Mr. Carmona what our current costs are that way to see if there is a savings or not. Uh, the other question that I have that I heard from the open forum was, and I think you all mentioned this, but just for the record, if a district does opt in, how can they opt out or how often, or what is the timeline for that?
When you opt in, when you opt in, it is, uh, a five-year commitment and it is just a, uh, notification to TRS by December thirty-first of the year, of the plan year prior, or the calendar year prior to the plan year start. So plan year is from September first through August thirty-first. So let's say that you wanted to join, um, on, uh, September first of twenty twenty-five, you would need to notify TRS by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And vice versa. If you wanted to leave September first of twenty twenty-five, this is just an example of twenty twenty-five, you would need to inform them by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So it's six, nine months ahead.
But we would, if we opted in, we would have to stay for five years.
Five years, correct, that is correct.
And then I'm glad that this slide is up as far as the out-of-pocket cost.
Yes.
So it says thirty percent after deductible, and this was the, one of from Ms. Eddie, I believe, that I heard, is that if somebody gets truly ill and let's say they go to the emergency room, it's thirty percent after deductible. So that means that they would have to pay, if it's just employee only, twenty-five hundred out of pocket and then they would pay seventy percent of whatever their bill is.
They would pay thirty percent. We pay the seventy percent.
Okay, so they would pay thirty percent. What is, do you know what the average emergency room stay or cost is?
I do not. I do know though that we do not do any penalties. I did see that you have a five hundred dollar charge before they can even walk in. We do not do that.
So, and that's where I'll go to Mr. Carmona. What are our current cost? I, I have a thousand three hundred and twenty for the primary fifteen oh two and then thirteen, I think it was seventy-one. So what do our, what does ours currently look like for families?
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Just FYI, happened to look it up real quick. Uh, in the United States, an emergency room visit costs twenty-two hundred dollars on average. According to United Healthcare in an article published in Healthcare Costs, January first, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-two hundred.
So in that instance, the first time, it would not fulfill the full deductible. So that would be a full cost, but then after that, let's say the second time, you would have three hundred dollars off of that towards the deductible and then the remaining portion you would then multiply by the thirty percent. Or with the other plan, the twenty percent.
Well, it's important for employees and for us to know exactly what that looks like. Thank you.
Yes. Please.
Five hundred and seventy for the second visit.
I apologize.
I did the math real quick, five hundred and seventy for the second visit. So two emergency room visits would total, on the average, two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
I would do a third and then that would drop a whole heck of a lot. I mean, it would, you're putting in the deductible as the first, as a, as adding two. You have a five hundred on a second one and a twenty-two hundred on the first one. If you add in a third one, it would be five. So five and five and two divided by three is a lot less than that twenty-two that you're saying, so just FYI.
Mr. Carmona, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. So to answer your question, Ms. Masias, I'll start with employee and children. Under the premier plan, there's, just to clarify, there's two options available since there's two networks being offered. For employee and children, again, under the premier plan is, for employee is three hundred and fifty-two PPO. ACO is three hundred and ten. For the base plan is two hundred and twenty-five PPO and ACO one hundred and ninety-eight. For the consumer driven plan, PPO is one ninety-five and ACO is one seventy-two. For employee and family under the premier plan is seven hundred and forty. ACO six hundred and fifty-one. Base plan, PPO five forty-two. ACO four hundred and seventy-seven. Consumer driven, five thirty-five PPO and ACO four seventy-one. You're welcome.
So very similar because those numbers that you just stated did not have your five seventy-five per person added to those that y'all are contributing, whereas my numbers did not have your contributions to that. So your thirteen compared to six plus five seventy-five becomes very similar. Any other questions, please?
Ms. Teresa, I have one more question, so.
Always.
Um, for the TRS active care, region nineteen rates for twenty twenty-three twenty-four.
Right now, we're on twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, but.
Sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four, my apologies, yes, twenty-three, twenty-four is the current rates, yes.
Okay.
The numbers that we have.
So right, what I'm looking for at is twenty-three, twenty-four on the website. Says employ only for active care primary is three eighty-eight.
Three eighty-eight, correct.
How is it that one of our neighboring districts in region nineteen, the information they provided um, with TRS active care, the, um, cost is seventy, over seventy percent higher than that? Are you trying to say that they are?
Which, which district are you saying? Because everyone in, everyone in Actica, if you need to tell me the district because they, there are a lot of plans.
Canutio ISD, what I have.
Canutio is not with active care.
Okay, cuz.
They're not with active care, they are with a blue plan, but they're not with active care.
The information says TRS active care, it's got the exact same table, very similar to what you have published on your site, it looks the same to what we've received in one of the previous workshop, it says TRS active care, it's got the same deductibles, it's got the same preventative care cost. Everything is the same except for the cost. You're telling me that Canutio ISD is not.
Is not in active care, they are not. They're not currently in active care. We have discussed with them joining and, uh, they, um, kind of missed the deadline. But the best way to say they missed the deadline, they couldn't vote by December thirty-first. They are on a blue plan, they are on a blue cross plan, but they are not with active care, they do not have these rates.
So the reason their rates are higher is because they are not on TRS active care, right? That's what you're saying.
Correct. A lot of the dis, we had ten districts that joined this year. Six of them were on Blues plans that were just not sustainable, they were partially self-funded. They had to pay for their, um, stop loss amount, their administration fees were higher and they did not have the purchasing power that over a half a million people do in active care to negotiate those better rates. And that is why we saw ten districts, six of them being from Blues plans, come to the active care plan.
Um, in, in the, I, I did some, some research myself regarding EPI SD.
Okay.
And, um, they were with, with, uh, TRS active care for approximately ten years?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what do you contribute their withdrawal from? What, why do you think they left?
I was, I, when I started, when, uh, I've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for over twelve years and I was with the team when, um, TRS left and went with Aetna. Um, and not to throw them under any, any form of bus, but there have been many times that people said, thank God that we're back with Blue Cross. Um, we have, with that being said, uh, everything rumor wise that I had been told was it didn't matter what, El Paso ID, it was going to leave no matter what, they just wanted to leave.
So, um, what I was, what I had read is that EPI SD contribution that kept increasing and again, they don't know from year to year how much that's gonna increase. It's just kind of, here it is, and since there's no negotiating, they had no choice but to accept it. And then that the employee premiums were increasing as well. Um, does TRS active care increase its contribution with the rise of healthcare?
So the TRS contribution really comes down to two things. And one is their discounts that we get from Blue Cross. So we saved over twenty billion dollars in discounts from Blue Cross, TRS did, this past, yeah, year. And then secondly, um, because as Yeme said, uh, it is a, uh, health plan within a government, uh, program. Kind of basically, uh, the amount of money that they get, they negotiate more and more and more, try to negotiate more and more and more each year in regards to that. One of the biggest things that we really just kind of breezed over there, but, uh, wanted to, to discuss is, uh, as I said, the past three years, we have seen a decrease in rates in this area. That is not the case for across the state. That being the more metropolitan areas or what we call the dash areas, the, the Dallas, Austin, San Antonio, Houston, theirs have gone up every single year. They were in the past having a beneficial, uh, from there being a statewide. Whereas Panhandle, West Texas, East Texas, they were the ones that were really taking it badly because of that statewide plan. And now, people that are causing those rates to go up are now taking their actual portion of the pie, whereas those that aren't are getting and reaping these benefits.
And, and ideally, um, TRS active care was designed to help smaller disti- districts, um, afford healthcare for their employees, but that doesn't really help us. Um, and, and what I mean by that is it, when exactly or how much did TRS change the amount they were contributing to EPI SD to help them? In other words, TRS, uh, makes it so that the smaller districts can, can make it affordable, but the bigger districts are kind of taking in most of the brunt.
The only thing that, that is legislated is the minimum, a hundred and fifty from the district, seventy-five from the state. The state average contribution is three hundred and fifty-ish dollars, like three hundred and fifty-four, keep me honest. Um, besides that, uh, this area contributes a lot more than that in regards to it. But, uh, when it comes to the setting of the rates, uh, they do the analytics on the area now. Previously, it was statewide and there wasn't much. But now that it is on what your piece of the pie is, so let's say for example, if a dietrist from Fort Worth came out here, one, he'd be run out in a couple of days from what he charges. Two, the amount of, of utilization claims. We see that in the more metropolitan areas, your average claim per person is somewhere between sixteen and twenty claims per person. And the rest of the state, we're looking at more around the lines of eight to twelve. So that utilization and the cost of care is what was driving that. And then it was having negative effect on the premiums going up, up and up. Whereas now with these regional rates, you actually are seeing rates go down in these areas where rates are going up in the areas like that, that are actually now having to start to pay their portion of the pie. And that is why, when you were saying with El Paso ISD, there wasn't that ability. It was just going up and up and up because cost of care. And now you have that ability to have the people pay for their portion of the pie.
Meaning other parts of Texas? Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, I want to point out one thing, TRS does not make contribution to the healthcare program. We don't have a appropriation from the state. Prior to eighty-eighth legislative session, there is no such thing, no money flew through TRS to go into the, the, the health plan. And the, the dollars in the program is one hundred percent contributed by you, by your payroll deduction, by money you put in. We send you one bill every month, that is a gross premium, including your employees' portion, your portion, that's all the money we got until twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four was the first year the state decided to give TRS active care five hundred eighty-eight point five million dollar to help the teacher, help the employers in active care to pay for healthcare services. That is the first legislative infusion into active care. We treat all larger schools, smaller schools, the same. There is no bias towards the size. Region, like Clayton explained, the, which region you are in does make a difference, like buying a house, if you buy a house in El Paso versus buying a house in Dallas, Fort Worth, the price is going to vary, which is why the cost per person varies as well. Other than that, everybody is treated the same. Whether we'll get another infusion from the state in the coming eighteen ninth session, we don't know. We don't know that, but we did for eighty-eight session and prior to that, we got COVID cost reimbursement, that's the federal funds flew through the, the, the state and then from the state to TRS active care. And again, that benefited, benefited districts, participants in active care only.
On, on, and I, I have one more question, on average, how much do you think, and again, I'm referring to EPI SD only because regionally, it's, it's the most relatable to us in size and region. Um, how much do you think they increased in year? How much did the, the district, um, increase in, in their contribution? And how much did the employees increase in their premiums? Do you, I mean, you may not have that information now, but is that something that we can get? Or is that?
I'd be happy to get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, TEA, they do have a list of, uh, district contributions.
Okay.
And almost all of these, so like for example, you with FFGA, your TPA, they have your, uh, um, information online, uh, for viewage and that is very easy to get.
That's something we can get?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're quite welcome.
Ms. Teresa, the plan year runs from what month to what month?
September first through August thirty-first, it could be, try to keep it close to the same as the, the, uh, teacher's schedule.
So the rates published on the website right now are effective until August thirty-first and then there will be new rates published for September first, twenty twenty-four, when?
So they, uh, Yeme said that, that a little bit, she, the board meeting will be, and it's public, the board meeting will be on May second and third and that is where the board will be approving. And that is where the board will be approving the rates for the year.
Again, that will be the gross rates. And then, so across the EU trustees, you decide how much you want to contribute to buy that if you're in active care.
Yeah. So example, the, the numbers that I gave, like these, that's before anything that, that y'all would do.
Right, so by gross rate, that means that's a per employee, for employee only, what you said, 388?
Yes.
If the district contributes 575, then the employee would pay absolutely nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That is before, and as I said, if you guys can tailor that however you'd like. If you want the employee only to be 300, and then you want employee and spouse to be 600, y'all are more than welcome to do that. The minimum was just that 225, we already take that kind of into account. But that's the, that, besides that, you can tailor it however you'd like. Let's say, you know, we've got several in the Midland area that, you know, are, are kind of spouse only because their husbands are working for one of the oil companies. And so they tailored their benefits, their, their premiums to that employee only. We have other areas that tailor theirs for employee and family because that's their demographic that they have. So we give you all that right to tailor that however you would like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Esen.
Of course.
Question.
Yes.
You mentioned that, of course, legislature or the legislative session gave us supplemental funding. Have you calculated what the premiums would increase if we don't get funding? Because it's only good for the biennium.
Yeah, so Yeme was gonna have that information here in, in just a second. But we do have some infographics that do show what it would have been with and without the funding. It's, off the top of my head, I believe that it was like $114. She's pulling it up right now, though, I can tell.
I think it's in my slide, but I'll just tell you that the premium and the, the premium we, we just told you, that's for 2024. And then, if you join, say you fill the paperwork to join us, you will come in next plan year. So that's not being, you, the, the rates that we have today would not apply to your case. And I'll share a little bit background because remember I said that we got more than 600 million COVID reimbursement money. So we use that money to buy down everybody's premium in '23. But then in '24, we told the legislature, now that the money has been used, we will increase a premium. And the legislature was like, no, the whole, the premium is steady, we don't want you to increase premium. So that triggered this first appropriation into TRS Active Care. And the purpose of that infusion is just to smooth out the premium increase. And whether they're gonna do that again, nobody knows, we'll have to see. But even without the infusion by the state, our premium, the 14% premium, remember in one slide I said, we are 14% lower than comparable rates, plans in the market, in the same market. That is not considering the state infusion we got. That is considering TRS Active Care without the state money. So regardless, even the state appropriation goes away next year, our premium is still competitive. And that's through our collective purchasing power. That is through very, very vigorous plan management. And finding third-party resources to pay for high-dollar claims. Everything we do, it's, it's many things contributed to the lower premium that we have for our plan members today. It, I, I don't think one thing can, can address it.
So you'll be able to share the increase in premium for the district and for the employee, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Chow, Mr. Esen, are also your formularies, your participating physicians, even by specialty, participating, say providers, is all of that public? Because, you know, when I hear something like that, I think it's great, but that would be, you know, like, a Hyundai dealer bragging to me that they're 50% cheaper than Lexus, of course.
Of course.
So, you know.
Yeah, so the, I, it's, it's rough on paper, sorry. But I pulled this actually when I was at Santa Lazzario two weeks ago, presenting to them. And it is straight from our Blue Cross, Blue Shield, TRS Active Care website. And there is a section called Provider Finder. You can do anything from zip codes, you can also search by any of these specialties. We also have cost estimates, one of those last slides that you saw there was a cost estimate that you can actually pull up and do for different hospitals and places. I just wrote down the big ones, hematology, oncology, dermatology, orthopedic surgery, and cardiology, rehabs, hospitals, ambulatory centers, hospices, rehabs, dialysis centers, labs, DMEs, internal medicine, general practice. But every one of these was on there. And it was listed, and it does give their address, their name, any accolades, any awards. And then it also will allow you, there's several different things that you can search for. So for example, if you needed to have somebody that was, that spoke Spanish, you can actually click on a filter and have it where it only does that. If you aren't, aren't comfortable with having a male.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. I under, I understand all of that, the important thing is that.
It's visible on.
When I'm looking for whether my provider is part of it or not, I already know whether they speak Spanish, I already know that I like them, I already know their office hours. What I want to know is, is my provider part of the plan, yes or no, and that's it? So I just wanted to be sure that your provider list.
You can also find it on our wa, on our app. Every single person has access to an app and you would be able to get Provider Finder and search that.
But can I look at that app right now, even though I'm not a member?
Of course.
Okay, sounds good. The other question.
You can also, you, you can, just sorry to interrupt you, you can also share your top provider list. Let's say you utilize top 100, oh man, that's too many, maybe top 10 hospitals that your employee use the most. You can share the list with us and we can confirm for you whether they are in network or not. I believe ESI's formulary is published, it's public information, and I can share a link that's of interest.
Okay. Your formularies, when I look at your formulary, is it going to indicate which one requires a pre auth and which one doesn't? I'll give you a very specific and personal example. I went to go pick up a medication today, and when I went to go pick up that medication, through no fault of the person that I was picking it up for, the state provider changed, so very much like would be the situation right here. The employee has no control over who we as a board choose to be the provider for their services, right? So the state provider changed who was providing the coverage. When I show up to pick up the medication, I'm all of a sudden told that it's going to be $1,000 for the medication. All right, it just so happens to be that it is the immunosuppressant required for survival of the particular, you know, disease process that this person is experiencing. So now, I have to go back to the physician and try and get a pre auth. Where number one, the insurance wouldn't renew the medication anyways because they only renew in 90-day increments, right? But at no point did the insurance ever communicate that a new pre auth was going to be required because it was switched. And here we are at the trail end of that medication prescription period for what they have available to them. And now, pharmacy is telling me that I need a pre auth. Why? Because the insurance is asking for it. The insurance knows that they need that. So why, at some point, did they not look at the history of this particular person and say, oh, let's communicate to their provider, who is also part of our network, to say, you're gonna need to submit a new pre auth? Or, you know, I guess we could have looked at, so, back to the question.
Yes.
If I am looking at the formulary, can I look at the drug name, whether it be generic or anything else, and see that a pre auth is required for that particular drug? So that I know when I walk into my doctor's office, I need to have the form in hand, hand it to him and say, you're gonna have to complete this because it's not going to be approved unless you do it?
100%. ESI, in fact, I can even go, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, I can go even farther on that. So ESI is who we ended up going with this past year. We were previously with CVS Caremark. They actually did.
ESI Express Scripts?
E- Express, CVS Caremark was who we used last year. And we went with ESI Express Scripts. That's what they, sorry, that's their acronym that they go with, my apologies on that. They actually made proactive outreach to all of their members if they found that there was a drug that they were currently on with CVS Caremark that either required a pre-authorization or was something that wasn't going to be covered to get them onto something that was. Especially drug like you're, you're expressing there, they actually have a white glove service that we actually have a person that will be assigned to make sure that you are using that drug correctly, making sure that it is stored correctly, et cetera, et cetera. Making sure that you don't end up looking up and going, oh man, I should have actually done this last week, I'm out now. And making sure of that, and that is a, a service that they offer as well.
Understood, except typically when a person has a chronic illness, they know what drug they use, they know how to use it, they've always used it, it's a, you know, it's a history. So I appreciate all the extra stuff, you know, the particular instance that I, I like what you said at the very beginning.
You also have your own ID card, if that were to have happened while you were standing at the pharmacy. You have an ID card for Express Scripts that has dedicated customer service. That would be able to have answered that question and tell you what and why that happened. Because that is a one-off that happened to you, and they would be able to come up with a solution as quickly as possible. If they did need to call the doctor themselves, just like our personal health guides, we actually can make appointments for you. If you're having trouble getting through to the doctor, things like that, we will be able to do that for you.
Okay.
Question. Your PowerPoint presentation didn't include anything on the prescription plan. What is it?
Yeah, so basically, the, the same. So we have, we have zero-dollar generics, we have a specialty program, we have a formulary list that is on Express Scripts. And it's basically just express scripts.com forward slash TRS Active Care. Every single person will get their own ID card from Express Scripts. The bread and butter of them is that they have been around and they do not have any real skin in the game in regards to owning one specific pharmacy. So you do have the ability to get broader discounts across the, the state. Instead of previously where, guess what, they wanted you to go to CVS to get the, the best discounts. And then also, they are, are very good at transferring to 90-day home delivery, to where people don't even have to go to the pharmacy anymore.
That's not what I asked, can you go down the, the list, like, preferred, non-preferred, specialty? What's the copays on all that, the generics?
If you give me a second, I can pull that up for you.
Yes.
Yeah, we can also send you a link with the full benefits for region 19. So I'm just gonna read, it's not on the slide, but I'll read it to you. For the primary plan, you have generics $15 for 30 days, 31-day supply. And $45 for 90-day supply. Of course, all the, the preventive medication, they are free of charge for coverage. Then preferred member pay 30% after deductible. And then non-preferred member pay 50% after deductible. This is just for the primary plan. But we can send you a link, you can take time to just study the pharmacy benefits, all together, medical on top, pharmacy at the bottom.
With that question to administration, was that link provided to our employees? I know they received a survey. So were they able to look at, you know, the formularies and the medications, that way they could make an informed decision as they filled out? I think I heard that it was a difficult survey to complete.
Yes, there were a couple of links that were provided for them to be able to access the TRS site and our summary plan. So yes.
So they were able to look to see if Humalog was on there and if it was covered?
It will take a couple of steps for them to get down to that type of information, but yes, the information was accessible.
So under specialty, whose plan I'm looking at, Canuteo, it says zero if Savon SP eligible, what is that?
Savon is their discount program, similar to like a GoodRx, where they will do all of the backend negotiations with the manufacturers to get those products down to zero charge.
Savon is, is a third-party company that Express Script hired to administer very high-cost specialty medication. As you know, the specialty medication makers, they try to hold on to the market share. So a lot of time, they give out financial aid for people who qualify. So Savon SP is just a organized efforts to put the financial assistance provided by manufacturers for people who are on those medication, we have the same program.
The next part says you pay 30% after deductible.
That's just.
If you are not, if you are not enrolled in that program.
And this program has that?
What do you mean? Yes, so the Savon program is a free program for you to enlist into. If they do not, then yes.
Is there some prescriptions that are not eligible or is it based on individual? I don't, it just says eligible.
There, there are some medications that does not have adequate manufacturer assistance. Those medication may not be on Savon SP's list, but the list is pretty broad.
And it's a 31-day max regardless, right?
Typically because of the, yes, the expense of those, they don't do 90 days. And a lot of those are injectables, so they have to be, you, you can't send 90 days on those.
So we, we use like Mr. Nahad as an example, that prescription that he brought up, what would be the copay for him based on this thing?
Without actually looking that up, sir, I have absolutely no clue.
We have to.
There are four, there are 450 drugs on the formulary list.
That's exactly what happened the last time when we went to, to the last plan.
I'd be more than happy to.
Because people say, you know, we have parent or teachers come in here and say, I can't afford the drug. You know, even though it said 110 max pay or something, they, they were paying more than, than what, what the plan said. And here, you know, you, you give us the same answer, which is nothing really, because they need to understand that. You know, I think these teachers should be allowed to inquire, because I know they have some kids that are sick and, and, that are going to require this medication, and they should have even a higher input in, in how we make our decision up here on this plan.
And, and you're being generic to me as well, so.
No, no.
I don't know what.
No, don't, don't start with me, okay, please, don't start, please. We, we, we had it the last time, and we don't want this to happen again. But I, I think we need input from, from.
And we have many a people that would be happy to sit down.
Okay, that's all I need, but I don't want to be surprised and then them say, oh, look, I have to pay now $800 out of pocket for whatever. And, and we have our teachers working for their healthcare plan, no, they need to live.
I, we are around all the time. We come in April and May and we go over all of these, and we hang around, we bring people from Express Scripts. And that would give them three months to go over their drugs to make sure that they were all in there. That would give them three months prior.
Well, I think they need something now so they can say, hey, does the board go this way or the board doesn't go this way? You know, we, we need that information to say, oh, look, this is what it's going to cost you, so they can understand.
I give it to Mr. Carmona, it is a link that has all of that, and they're able to enter that in even to the milligram. And how many times they take it.
That's what we would need.
Got it, on its way, I'll get that for you, sir.
Okay.
Just one final statement, Mr. Esen, just to clarify and to correct, you mentioned that EPI SD is looking at going to TRS Active Care?
They have just reached out to us to see if they can, if there was a way to come back before the five years.
Well, I've, I've checked with chief human resources officers, chief financial officer, and the superintendent, and they said that that's not correct. EPI SD is not thinking of TRS Active Care. Just to clarify, that way we're, we're on record, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm, my apologies on that, that is what I had been told by our salespeople who have been going to them and trying to sell them for Blue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Esen, thank you, Ms. Chow. All right, Mr. Carmona, and I, I'm about to, I'm about to say something here, and y'all can disagree with me or not. Dr. Carmen, I appreciate and understand the length and the effort that was put into all this presentation. I mean, looking at it, we are about 40 slides into a 73-slide presentation. But in my opinion, so far, it's been a health insurance workshop, and what we needed was a fund balance workshop. We needed a solid plan to understand what it. We needed a solid plan to understand what administration's proposal was to provide some correction to the direction that our fund balance is going right now. And I mean, I think we all received this presentation in advance. I saw it, I read it, I understand it. But to me, this is all historical. What I want to know is what is administration's proposal? What is your proposal, sir, to help us correct the deficiency we have in the fund balance? What's the plan? That's what I'm looking for. If anybody else wants to continue to listen to the presentation, you know, just tell me to sit back and enjoy the presentation. But to me, that is the most important part and where I have not heard one statement yet about what that is.
I, I second that. That's what we asked for. We asked for a plan.
So the plan is, is part of this presentation. Health insurance is a huge component of, we pay our employee benefits. And we've not had the opportunity to have TRS present to the boards. We included them, asked them to provide the information. Mr. Carmona has some updated numbers. Again, 89% of our budget is being spent on salaries and benefits for this district. For us not to look at the benefits, this district would be short sighted. So yes, there's a large component on the health insurance because health insurance has been a part of the deficit spending for years since Socorro ISD. But there is a lot more than just the health insurance in tonight's presentation, including recommendations to rectify the spending in the direction we're headed financially.
Can we get to that part and then come back to the health insurance? I mean, because what I'm looking for is, you know, some creative thought process here. You know, if we look at, so if our enrollment projections are accurate from what we saw, we've been growing and growing and growing and now we're going to experience some contraction. So as we've grown, our spending has increased. So what is the plan to mirror a reduction in spending based on the contraction as well? I mean, and we're looking at growth in central office and support programs, looking at, I think some of the speakers earlier had great suggestions. What portion of our costs, say for example, if we pay, I believe, on a per student basis for our student module, how much are costs going to reduce there? How many of our programs are, are duplicative? How many of them are overlapping? What programs can we turn around and look and strategic eliminate? Have we even evaluated which are not being used and yet we continue to, you know, renew them? I mean, yeah, it's, it's 11% of the budget, but when you're looking at 11% of a $450 million budget, guess what that is? That's $45 million. So it is significant. I mean, I, I understand the health insurance impact completely, but you know, we're not going to fix this alone. We didn't, this pro, this deficit that we are facing right now didn't occur overnight with, you know, the health insurance exclusively. So, you know, what else are we looking at?
So again, we can certainly fast forward through this health insurance component and hit the other areas. And there's a breakdown here of other object codes as I explained in the overview. The 6100 through 6400, which includes our contracted services, supplies, travel for the district, all of that is part of tonight's insurance or part of tonight's, we have been saying it, presentation. But if you'd like to skip past the next portion of the health insurance, be happy to do so.
I would, I think we can, I mean, I understand exactly what the impact of the health insurance is. I think we've seen those numbers before. Want to look at, you know, what the impact is of every other area that's being considered so that we have a solid understanding on where do we sit right now? What's the next step? And how soon do we need to meet again?
Okay, so then our next portion would be on federal funding. You asked about the evaluation of programs. I think Dr. Starkey's going to touch on some of that in his presentation to you. The programs are evaluated, we do not purchase duplicate services. The subscriptions are either campus-based or number of students-based, there'd be a small impact on them, but most of those are paid with federal funds anyhow. So Dr. Starkey.
Quick question. Thank you, Mr. Starkey. Dr. Carmen, is this going to be part of the plan moving forward? Is, are we going to get more grants? Are we gonna, or is it just a backwards view of what we're doing?
So there were some questions in the last workshop regarding the use of federal funds, moving positions into it. So I wanted to make sure the board had a clear understanding based on those questions. So part of it is about, yes, what we're doing, how we use the federal funds, but part of it answers the questions Mr. Nahada was just asking. I don't know that we anticipate additional federal funds. Our grant writers are here as well to talk a little bit about the grants that are being pursued, the process that they use, again, in answer to the workshop that was held last month with this board.
Are we going to reallocate any 199 into federal funds or into grants?
So I, I think that's what Dr. Starkey wants to explain to the board.
So if the answer is no, then I think, again, we want, we want answers, you know, what is the plan? Because if the answer is no, then I think it's backward facing.
It's the why that we cannot, because we cannot supplement, we have to supplement with these funds. And I think that was the question that came up last month and I, that's why we asked Dr. Starkey.
But the quick answer, no.
I'm sorry?
So the answer is no.
Yeah, we cannot.
So board, do we need that information or do we want to get to the plan as far as?
I want to get to the plan. I want to understand, I mean, again, all this historical stuff is nice.
And Dr. Starkey, it's not, please know that it's not you.
All this is.
No worries.
Completely understood, but if I'm sitting at my house and I'm looking at my budget and I'm overspending by $10,000, you know, and I look and I'm spending, you know, $600 on a vehicle loan and I've, you know, got to go buy a car, you know, cash so that I no longer have a vehicle loan. I've got to buy a more economical car because I've got an eight cylinder and I'm going to get four, you know, a four cylinder so that, you know, I double or triple my gas mileage or something, you know? That's the kind, and, and I would be putting my budget together and saying, okay, you know, these are my required expenses. I have no choice. I have to pay my water bill, you know, and there's a minimum there. No matter what, I can increase my water usage, I can decrease my water usage, but my minimum is always going to be, you know, $80. So I cannot reduce my water usage below $80. So if I was building my budget, I would look and say, okay, these are, these are all my non-negotiables. Okay? These are my manageable's, which, you know, I can monitor usage, et cetera. I can, you know, and then these are all my discretionary income, things that, you know, I then get to choose which to spend some. Now, I can't renegotiate my non-negotiables because those are necessary, right? I can manage my manageable's. And then the discretionary income, I can say, all right, well, you know what? I kind of like my nice vehicle. If I don't have a brand new vehicle, then I'm going to have to manage maybe increased maintenance costs, et cetera. So I can cut these 10 things, I can manage these five things and that gets me to my $10,000. Now, that, those, those, you know, 10 things from the discretionary was maybe out of a list of 30. You know, my manageable's, those five things was maybe out of a list of 15. And so, I mean, that's the kind of plan that I think that we're looking for, you know? And there are the non-negotiables, there are, you know, and, and, okay. And then help us understand the impact. If we look at, I don't know, Michael's successful student impact and we're paying $10 million a year for that particular program and yes, it's a great program, but only two students are using it, then you know what? Yeah, we're going to impact two students, but it's $10 million, you know? So all right, we start to understand the trade-offs there. That's the kind of information that we're looking for. Other than that, I mean, none of this really matters. It's done. It's how are we going to correct our path in the future? That's what we need. And as a financial person, you know, if I study the budget enough, I'd probably have to quit my job, but you know, that's also not my role either. That's what we're looking for administration to do for us. You all come together, you all understand exactly what the impact is and tell us what are our choices and what is going to be the cumulative savings? That's what we need.
I'd like to take that a step further too is when the budgets were passed two years ago and we voted for an increase in salaries and healthcare, what actions did the district take to ensure that we maintain the balanced budget? Because you, you come up here and you say, well, that's budgeted, but yeah, we're over budgeted, we have a deficit. But what did we do to maintain that balance? It's like Mr. Nahada said, it, it's a fixed pie. We, do we just say, oh, you know what? I don't care, damn the torpedoes. I'm not going to cut anything from, you know, maintenance or whatever, 10% from a district or cut excessive spending from somewhere else. I'm just going to spend and take it out of the, the discretionary fund or the budget reserves that we have. What was done by the district to ensure that we maintain a balanced budget?
So to answer that specific question, sir, whenever we did adopt the budget, I did clarify that that was not currently part of the budget on the increases that were requested. And I asked specifically if that was intended to come out of fund balance. And it was not discussed to cut down on any expenses whatsoever. It was intentional in the approval of it that it was going to be coming out of fund balance, sir.
I don't see that the intent. I mean, it's any kind of budgetary responsibility, just like Mr. Nahada said, if I only have $10,000 budget, I can't spend more than that. You know, it's, you, you have to allocate properly. We can go over the excessive spending that may, may not have a, a big impact on the overall budget, but it shows that the district hasn't taken any steps to mitigate or minimize any kind of excessive waste, you know? We're coming up on the end, end of the school year now, so these budgets are sitting there at the campuses and it's, you know, I worked for the government, so it's a use it or lose it. Are you, are, are, is there anything being in place to say, you know what? We are at what, 17 million deficit this year? That we're, what's the forecast for this year's deficit?
Including the increases, it was 33.
It's going to 33?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, see, so are we doing anything to mitigate that?
Okay, if it, we can go over the budget if it.
But I mean, it's yes or no? Are we doing anything to mitigate that right now? That's what, what the question is being asked.
So the answer is no.
Okay.
Because it was intended to come out of fund balance as, as approved. But if you would give me an opportunity, I can show you what the budget looks like. That way we can go over those non-negotiables, what we can and cannot move around with. And then we can talk about what that would impact overall. So the amount that you see in front of you is separated into payroll, contracted services, supplies, miscellaneous and debt service with capital assets. This is just 199. This is, does not include child nutrition, it does not include any of our debt service, it doesn't include any federal grants. This is exactly what the board adopts at the function level. What I'm going to present it at is at the object level, just as I said there. So these are the numbers from the beginning when we budgeted and it was approved. The actual amount, and that is the gray parts are what takes up on that budget. The actual amount, including the increases that were requested by the board, was 433.7 million, not 427. So that increased it by $17 million. And those rows where it says 6112, 6118, those are all of the different objects in which we have to pay out of. So the biggest one, of course, being salaries, that's a 6119. The next one is going to be 6129, that's our part-time or hourly and hourly staff. 614s are anything having to do with health insurance. So I'm going to go on to the next one. And that's the contracted services. We pay 35.3 million out of contracted services. And I highlighted two specific line items because every single one of those things on there are non-negotiables. Utilities, rentals, licenses, legal services, all of those are items that we absolutely cannot cut down on unless we're going to go out for different quotes, which we certainly can, but I think our purchasing department has done really well in making sure that we have the best prices. So those two outlined, 6249, those are contracted maintenance and repairs and 6299, which is our miscellaneous contracted services. And I'm going to deep, dig deeper into those. But when we're looking at it, I'm going to show it to you from the function level. So instructional, library, et cetera, et cetera. I highlighted those two sections because between a function 11 and function 36, those will always affect students. Those are student-driven function levels. So those, in my opinion, are non-negotiables. If we start messing with those, then we're going to be affecting student learning environments and I, I would prefer not to. Functions 51 through 61, those are operational. So our contracted maintenance and repair, the biggest amount is for maintenance and operations and that's for HVAC repairs. Professional plumbers, the, the higher level stuff that we can't do internally, those are contracts that we have to go out and get professionals to come out and do. So the only amount out of that large 3.7 million that we really do have to, to move around is 51,000, which is at the general administration level.
Ms. Perez, I would, I would, I would disagree with that.
Okay.
Specifically in the utilities, because in this last year, we've approved several contracts that were supposed to go and introduce efficiencies. And part of the reason that we did that was because there was promised savings. So have we evaluated the effectiveness of those agreements to make sure that we're realizing the savings that they promised? Or because if utilities haven't gone down, then apparently there's, you know, some sort of shortfall in, you know, the contracted service there. So then maybe we should be looking at, do they owe us, you know, any refund for, you know, non-provision of services or not achieving the objectives that were agreed to in the contracts?
That's a good point, sir. We do, we do have that monitored on a month-to-month basis based off of what we paid in previous years. But in the last three years alone, we've added at least two or three campuses.
Except they did a study and that study should be the basis of what their improvement is going to be. So, I mean, again, that goes back to my example of those manageable's, right? So I'm not going to be able to eliminate my base fee for a utility, but if they said by going from one kind of bulb to another, I'm going to cut my utility by 10% or at least 10%, I want to see a reduction by 10%. And yes, we've increased classes, we've increased, but you know, if, last time I looked at, you know, particular utilities for different locations, like one hospital versus another, they were completely separate accounts. So if they did Socorro High School, you know, versus Socorro Middle School, well, yeah, we had a lot of changes at Socorro High School, I understand, but not so many at Socorro Middle School that would negate, you know, any impacts of the improvement that we're supposed to see. So are we evaluating the improvement? Did we see them? And therefore we should see a reduction in the utility. And if we didn't, then do they owe us a refund or do we need to start looking at the terms of that contract? We're not doing that. We're not being that prudent, that, you know, financially responsible, then we're just giving money away to anybody, you know, who promises some positive impact. So, you know, especially with, you know, utilities and stuff, we need to be monitoring that. So again, going back to utilities, that's one area and looking at it, you know, electricity, that's almost $10 million. A 10% reduction there would be 1 million.
So we have evaluated those and they have declined from the previous year, sir.
Okay, so if I look at last year's budget to this year's budget, I'm going to see a reduction of $1 million for electricity?
I believe the amount was 3.1 and that was, and I can look back at that information, but we did provide that to the board, I want to say about a month ago.
All right, so $300,000.
No, 3.1 million.
Oh, 3.1 million. All right, I thought you meant 3.1%. Okay. All right, so from the 33 million that we were over budgeted, we're now down to 30 because it was a 3.1 improvement, correct?
Yes, at this point, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so again, when we're looking at the individual amounts between functions 11 and 36, those will directly impact the student's learning environment. And then 51 through 61, whenever we look at it, it's going to impact the overall operations of the school district. So again, at this point, we would only be able to, to whittle down on the 51.25, the 51,250. Contracted services is a very big part of our budget. That is where we have our RMPs. And RMPs are our temporary, our part-time, our, they're circumventing the process of becoming unemployed, quite honestly, because we still keep them on, they are not temporary. So this pool is probably equivalent So this pool is probably equivalent to about $5 million in RMP employees that we have in either child nutrition, maintenance, grounds. We have them at the campus levels. We have them at the DSC. So that is a very big part. Now, that is part of one of my recommendations, is to decrease the RMP by at least, I want to say, 2.5 million, maybe 3. But in real... Like realistically, that will impact how our maintenance department is able to maintain our buildings currently. If we have questions about that, if you want to, we do have some people here who'd be able to speak on behalf of that. I just... I want you all to understand that the 6299 is not just a $9 million bottomless pit there. It does go towards maintaining our buildings for the most part. We do have some of our safety and crossguards in that pool of money as well. And we try to stay within. However, the increase on the pay impacted that. So what we could get to stay within budget is now half of what we should be able to get. But we're trying to maintain within what we have. And so campuses and departments are trying to move their monies around and shuffle it around as much as they possibly can.
I have a question.
Yes.
So can you go back to maintenance?
Sure. Which...
The next one. Forward it. One more.
Okay.
So we're contracting out almost $3 million, correct?
Under maintenance, yes.
So years ago, I had brought up a proposal as to why don't we have a dedicated, I guess, team of maintenance and operations where... Let's say there is a roof problem. You know, whether it's five guys, whether it's 10 guys, whatever it might look like. But you have specialists, like I'll use it on electrician. So you have a master electrician. You have other lower electricians that can still perform, but the master electrician is the one that oversees the job. Wouldn't it be much more wiser to have... To pay a little bit more? And our, I guess, team is the one dedicated. Instead of hiring a contractor, now we start assessing other fees that they're going to ask for. And then if we also purchase, you know, the materials within the co-op or whatever buy boards we have, it's still going to be cheaper. But that's kind of my question. Why didn't we ever... I mean, wouldn't that be more beneficial in saving money that way? But they're only dedicated to plumbing, you know, major repairs. That's all they're really dedic... Now, if they're available to do smaller operations, well, then great. But it almost seems like there's some money there that we can save if you dedicate, you know, specialist. And you obviously pay. Then, well, if, you know, the... I don't know what a plumber is called, the best kind of plumber that there is, right? Level one, but like I use a master electrician. So they can oversee and approve all that stuff, right? Why aren't we developing... I mean, would it be more beneficial to do that and drive that cost down?
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Bettis. If I may, I'll backtrack a little bit. First of all, David Carrasco, Director of Operations for Socorro SD, President Nahida, members of the board, Dr. Carmen. With this, on this particular item right here, it's temp employees that we have. To be exact, numbers, 79 of those are within our campuses as custodial help. The other remaining are right at 24, 23. That kind of does fluctuate a little bit, would be in the maintenance, actual maintenance and operations. To go back to your question, we do, in the maintenance operations department, we have electrical department. We have master electricians, electricians 1 and 3. Those go out and they do all the services that they can throughout all the campuses as per work order system. Plumbing, the same way, master plumber, plumber 1s, plumber 2s, they go out the same way. HVAC technicians, we have only a few. So to answer, to go back to answer the entire question, I think we have what you're saying is what we try to approach. What we're doing now with the temps, the custodials are there. The custodial staff is there to help, to assist to as far as square footage. We have that coverage to make sure that the campuses are always maintained, taken care of on a daily, nightly basis. We have AM shift, PM shift. As far as on the maintenance side, we have limited. The majority of those 25 or 23 that I mentioned are going to be in our grounds team because there's, I guess, an organization. It's APPA, American Fiscal Plan Association. And those standards are kind of worked through TASB when they figure out all the calculations. And currently, what happens with our district, our grounds team are kind of servicing through all of our campuses and departments and SACs, our SAC facility. They're kind of serviced like 120 acres. And really, the proposed amount through APPA is right around 40, 45. So we have to add additional temps to help to maintain, groom, take care of. Like right now, we're doing different kind of projects for the campuses.
And I appreciate everything that your department has done for the kids and the maintenance of the school. And see, I guess that's where my, I guess my concern is too. When you read it, you're not understanding even a further breakdown. So when we get... What we see is just exactly that, maintenance and operations.
Yes, sir.
But it doesn't include, hey, this is janitorial services. This is this, and this is that. So for me, I guess that's where there's...
Was I able to answer your question a little bit real clearly?
A little bit. But I mean, like I said, I get it. I understand. It's just I appreciate the clarity because that clarity was not brought to us. When we hear maintenance and operations, I can't speak for everybody else. But I think of, hey, in the cafeteria, you know, one of the sinks busted, or, you know, one of the stoves is having issues. So they got to go out there and fix it, get it up and running, stuff like that. So that's what I'm thinking, not as janitorial service, which is actually the brunt of what you just explained.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate that clarity.
And just a little bit more tidbit information is the other additional we have as far as attempts on the operation side, warehouse. So we have additional campuses. We have only a certain amount of staff in that area since there's always requests to deliver, pick up, setups for different campuses, different functions. We have some warehouse temps that help there. We have a couple because we are short, like in plumbing. We have maybe a couple of people that could help us as far as plumbing. And the other area might be... That's pretty much where our staff would be there. But the biggest on that item, that line item, would be custodial staff to assist with each campus.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Did I answer the question? Okay, thank you, sir.
Another question on the contracted services.
Yes, sir.
Does this include, like, the substitutes and...
No, sir. Substitutes is under 6112, which is 7.2 million.
Okay, well, I'm just going to ask the question because I know we have a lot of long-term subs. And then we had Diags that's being contracted out to fill the void. Would it hurt the district more if we were at 100% employment when it comes down to having to pay healthcare for full-time employees and TRS? Are we just not employing people to keep the cost down?
Oh, no, absolutely not. The HR department has done so many efforts to make sure that we have as many employees as possible. They are working diligently on that part. The substitutes is just a necessary evil of the school district. Not everybody's able to be here every single day. So we do have a budget for the substitutes.
So the cost savings of having a substitute as opposed to a full-time certified teacher would bring the budget back, would go back into the budget?
I'm sorry, what was that against, sir?
Yes, because if you have a full-time sub, you're not paying healthcare and TRS. Does that savings go back into the budget and say, well, it's not... What did you say? It was 211?
6112.
So does it bring down... Does it help the overall budget?
If we do not have substitutes?
No, if we do use substitutes over full-time teachers, certified.
Overall, in the budget, possibly. But is that what's best for the students?
No, I don't know. But that's what I'm asking. How much are we saving? The question is, how much are we saving on that right now? Is, does that benefit the district? Because we're... That's what's happening. Does it bring down the overall cost? I read one from another district where, well, actually, the person was accusing the board of not hiring with a cost savings of between $5 and $8 million just for not going full-time employment. The district is seeing a benefit or as a savings. How much is that?
Mr. Castellano, the purpose of the substitute program is not precisely for full-time. It's for when teachers are sick, when teachers need to be absent. That's how we, most of the budget, we use it to help those teachers to have someone in the classroom for that day or two days that they need to be absent. It's not... Full-time substitutes is very minimal, that what we have. And it's because those are situations that we can't find a teacher with those specific certifications for that specific classroom, but it's minimum. Most of the substitutes is for when our teachers put the need of the substitute that they need to be absent.
Okay, so what's the count then with the teachers that were short? The Diags with the sped teachers? What's... How short are we on those professional level?
Yes, that's a totally different question, sir. And I don't have those numbers.
Well, it's not total. It's what I'm asking. Because you have substitutes in their place.
Not really for the Diags and all of that. If we don't have the, fill out the vacancies, we don't just put a full-time substitute on that. We don't do that.
I'm still asking the question, research. Because if you're not at full employment, you're still saving on benefits and healthcare. How does that offset our costs, our deficit? How much is that? I mean, even if it's $10, you know, which is more than that, though, but...
What is exactly the question?
Yes, because we're not at full employment. You got professional positions that are still open.
Yes.
Yes. And you're not paying benefits, healthcare and TRS.
No, we're not paying salary. We're not paying that because the vacancy is open.
What is the district saving on that that can offset the deficit?
We needed to go and count the vacancies and see. Like this month, we have 100 vacancies. This is what we're not paying. It's not saving. It's what just we're... It's a halt. We're not paying. But that has nothing to do with the substitutes. I just want to clarify that.
Well, that's why I'm just asking the question. I'm asking the question, does it have to be substitutes? It could be the overall budget. That's what we're talking about.
Yes, we can get that number, Mr. Castellano, and count the vacancies, but it changed every day.
Well, it's fine. I mean, because they're still...
Yeah, we can calculate for a day and submit it for the weekend.
I mean, since the beginning of the year, it's been going on, so...
Yes, we will put that together.
Were there any other questions? If not, we'll go on to the budget for supplies. And the two line items that are the bigger line items that we can probably look into are 6396, which are furniture and equipment, and general supplies. Under 6396, when you're looking at functions 11 through 36, they're very minimal. The largest one is going to be on the maintenance and operations. And that one will be because we are either opening up a new academy or we're, you know, repairing some of the... Or we're buying larger equipment, excuse me. So we can probably... No, not on this one. I'm sorry, the biggest scenario is an instructional. We wouldn't be able to do much on that one. On 6399, the larger ones are exactly 11 through 36. So there's not much room that we would be able to move on the 6399 accounts for supplies. Under travel, we have under 6411, employee travel. We have 1.5 million, and I'll look into that one just a little bit more, along with 6499, which is miscellaneous operating expenses, which, quite honestly, that's going to be your hospitality and any tangible items such as plates, forks, et cetera. Under 6411, the employee travel, between 11 and 36, we don't touch those. Under general administration, we do have 388. And that is part of my recommendation, is to reduce the travel in that one function. However, functions 51 through 61 would be one that we would not be able to because our operations people are... That's probably mileage to and from campuses, quite honestly.
Which one is that, again?
6411, sir. Employee travel.
I do have some questions about employee travel.
Okay.
I read one of the updates from Weaver, and it talked about him evaluating travel for the district. And over the evaluation period, which was five years, he said there was like 33,000 travel transactions totaling $6.4 million. Those are his numbers. He'll be here, I guess, in the next board meeting to discuss that. What has the district... I asked for a travel expense from, I guess, from pretty much here, everybody in this building. And all I got was trustee travel, the travel that we did. And I asked for everybody. I didn't even get Dr. Carmen's travel information, where he stated how much it was, how much his expenditures were. That's a big question. How do we control that? We have a stipend, mileage stipend, which is called, and we're paying 1.3 million, 2, 1.2. That was the last number you gave me on that annually. If we go back the five years, we got $12 million in stipends and travel that everybody's, that we're paying out. We have no way of even reducing that amount or we even look at that. I brought that up at a board meeting. How do we reduce the mileage stipend? Is that necessary? Can we just assign a teacher to work in a campus all day and then report to another one the next day and not pay the stipend? But it's just something that everybody grabbed onto and said, no, we can't give it up. But it's... Now we're looking at healthcare and everything else that we have to face. What can we trim? What can we make some cost savings on? You know, do we... You know... I don't think it's right that we only... I only got the numbers for the board travel. We didn't got Dr. Carmen's report, you know, even up the whole first row, at least. I'm curious to see how much we're spending, how much is necessary because that affects all these other budgets you say we can't touch. We can't touch. We can't touch. But you don't have to travel everywhere. You can bring the training here. You can do... You can find other ways to do it. But it's like there's no urgency to do that. It's just, oh, it's the taxpayer. Let's pay it. We can do it. We can let them pay the cost instead of being more efficient on our end.
I just want to add something to that. I mean, because you asked for five years, correct?
That's what...
So when you go back five years, that still puts us within the time of COVID. So there shouldn't have been a lot of traveling or any travel. So when you look at it, it's probably more or less three and a half, four years with the amounts that he gave. So if we can just look at it that way?
So I would probably have to get with you maybe after the meeting so that we can look at what the specifics are. Because when I'm showing this, this is specifically 199 only. A lot of the grants, which are not under the purview of the board, are not going to be reported up here. So that's where some of the travel is going to be. That might be the difference in the number between what is in here and what is presented with Mr. Casner. As far as, I can tell you specifically, non-employee travel, that's board travel. That's $80,000. So I think that that is a small amount considering the requirements that are necessary for you to do your duties here. So that's not something that I would consider cutting down either. The travel stipend is a payroll amount. That's a 6149. And that one, I believe I mentioned it was 6.1. And those are other. it was 6.1, and those are other, that's just one of the many stipends that are in that pool there, under 6149. So, travel stipend and travel expenses are completely different items, and we can get, I mean, if you want to, we can talk about that off to the side, and we can get exactly what information you want, just so that you don't feel like I'm leaving something out. I want to make sure I understand exactly what your request is.
Okay, so the stipends are under 6149, is that correct?
Not all of them, some of the stipends are under 6120, um, 6128, 6118, extra duty and stipends. And 61, yeah, 6118 and 6149.
Okay, and, and I think the stipends is something that the board would have to look back and, and reevaluate the, these stipends, because it was, you go back a few years and stipends were being created by cabinet and without board approval. And, um, I think now we have to look back and say, are these stipends necessary? Do we need them? And, and the board needs to look back, and right now, you got six, 12, 18 million? What was the other?
6118 is in all stipends, but there's some in there. But yes, I do agree, that is definitely something that was, that's within the rights of the board, and we can look at what, um, what stipends we have, and, and if there's any requests that you'd like for me to look into, we can look at what that looks like proposing to either reduce or eliminating.
I think we do, we do need to, uh, just based on the fact of our historical, that they were not approved by the board and they were not presented, it was a strictly cabinet taking, doing the, and, and paying out the stipends without board approval, and I think we need to bring it in and review it and to ensure that, uh, that the right, that the teachers and the, uh, coaches are getting the right stipends, that everything's in the right place and we can review it, and if it's not necessary anymore, we need to eliminate it.
Okay. So, under 6499, if we can look at that one, that is the miscellaneous services, those are hospitality and, um, any intangible, I'm sorry, tangible items. So, 1 through 36, I would not consider touching, 51 through 61, I would not consider. General administration, I can tell you that that is a huge part of our professional development, and whenever they come in and have meals and any catering that is being done at the district level. So, for us to reduce the 41, the 412,000, we would have to reduce a lot of what we're doing for our public, including our partners in education, um, military and engagement, father, daughter, those, that is a, really the biggest part of where that 6499 comes out of.
That was, that's, that's another item that, well, that came up last year when we had that $500,000 set aside for stip, for the, uh, the catering, right? That's this budget, the catering?
Correct.
Okay, and last year, we blew through the, the, the $500,000, you know, seven months into the, the fiscal year, and you guys asked for another $200,000.
And that is part of the recommendation to reduce the budget.
And that was stopped, and you still voted, you still spent another $106,000 in catering that year, and it's, it's the excessive spending, that's what.
That's part of the recommendation this year, sir. And we have actually made some changes in how the hospitality is served during professional development, um, maybe one meal, maybe it's not breakfast and lunch, maybe it's just, just lunch, or, um, coffee and sweet bread. We have made some reductions in what we're doing as far as hospitality-wise.
Okay, so, right now, uh, that's 512, that was for the year?
Excuse me, sir?
The 412,000 is for the year?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I also understand there was a lot of waste involved in that, I mean, currently too, that they're, they're overpurchasing for these, uh, these catering events, and staff will come out and collect food boxes so they can take them home to their families or give them to their directors, and I see that, and it's just, it's, it's small, but it adds up, it is just, it's just.
We do have a process where we are planning, we use those planning numbers, let's say that there's a, um, an event for 30 people, I, we can't control how many show up, obviously, but we can control how much we're prepared for. And then at the end of that, they do have a justification as to how many people did show up, how many did not, and how much are being disposed of, there is a proper way of disposing those. Um, I don't know the exact details of that, but it is documented, sir.
Okay.
Under debt and capital assets, these are leases, things that we cannot control, the site-based internet technology, I don't remember the exact words, but they're leases that we have to go through in function 71. The three that we do have control over are the 6629, those are building purchases, constructions and improvements, vehicles over 5,000, that's 6631, and furniture and equipment.
Ms. Betis.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, so what are the recommendations?
Yep, I will get to that, sir.
It's just that, I mean, our budget is published, it's available on the website, again, you know, all these numbers, we understand, but what is the recommendation?
One of the recommendations is a VATRE, which is a voter-approved tax rate election.
Okay, hold on, Ms. Betis.
Yes, sir.
That is changing revenue, that is increasing revenue.
Correct.
Where are we go, what is the plan to cut? That is what we need, what is the plan to cut? Remembering that we just got, we just received a presentation for enrollment that says we are going to decrease by about 3,000 students over, you know, the next several years. It's almost, that's, that's a high school, 3,000 students. So, if we have a plan right now that says, okay, when we have a, one principal retire, when we have two assistant principals retire, when we have, you know, three custodians, a bus driver, um, on and on, you know, one, um, you know, two HR representatives, one assistant soup, I mean, we, when, as people start to leave the district, if we know where we're heading, because we have a clear plan, because we understand exactly where, these are positions that next year, we're not going to need according to these projections, and if we have that plan, or, or, and I know I just said positions, right? But anything else, programs, you know, um, have we looked at our master schedules to make sure that, you know, there's not, um, just two consecutive periods that are operating at 50%, and we can join them together and, you know, assign one particular instructor to another class? Have we done those kinds of things? Those are the things that are going to help us get to where we need to be, and, and, and they'll do it painlessly. If somebody leaves the district, they're leaving by their choice, if they retire, if, you know, they move on, if, whatever the case may be, right? Those are the things that we can proactively then not act upon. If things change, if we don't lose 3,000 students, if we gain 6,000, we can always turn around and rehire. Rehire, or hiring is easy, but trying to trim takes informed, proactive measures. So, where is that?
That is, one of the recommendations we have is, this is one of the recommendations, would be to go to TRS, no proposed retention stipends, reduce part-timers by 3 million, reduce RMP by 2.5, reduce hospitality and staff travel by 1.5.
And what's RMP?
The temporary workers?
Okay.
And reduce hospitality and staff travel by 1.5, but that may impact functions 11 through 60, 36, and my main goal was not to have it impact the students. And then attrition of non-campus staff, so, so as long as it doesn't affect students' learning, and maybe it's at the district level, then we would not replace those employees. That would mean that we would get the revenue source of 44 million from the VATRE, then we can propose a 2% increase in the next year, phase in part-time, phase in RMP, and phase in our, our miscellaneous travel. So, I understand you're saying that a lot of it is, is how we're going to trim the fat on the budget, the expenses, but part of my job is also to come up with different ways of increasing the revenue. And the VATRE is definitely a way to increase that revenue. If it was a matter of cutting out resources or adding resources, I would put all my efforts towards adding resources so that we can maintain what we currently have and not have it affect the students.
Understood, but there's always, you know, some fat to trim, again, going back to my personal budget expense, of course, I can always look for another job that pays more, but, you know, that, that would be like me walking outside and hoping that it rains, you know, I mean, maybe I find a job, maybe I don't, so, I'm not saying we can't do these, but, okay, well, I mean, what if we go over, you know, this voter-approved tax rate and it doesn't approve? I mean, if, if, if that's what we're counting on? We still need to, again, let me go back to saying, we added programs, these programs grew when we were a growing district. I have heard time and time again that we are no longer a growing district, so what are we going to remove? Did, did we do a strategic assessment of all programs and see where the overlaps are? Have we looked at our master schedules to make sure that, you know, where, I mean, if you tell me yes?
I don't know the answer to the, like, the master schedule.
Okay, and, and so, I mean, why aren't we doing those, or have we?
If I could, we do. Dr. Gonzalez, do you want to, do you want to talk about the staffing that we do with the campuses? Based on the enrollment, based on class sizes, that you do regularly with the campuses?
Dr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
What is the question?
What I think Mr. Nahara is asking is, as we're losing students, are we, through attrition, losing positions?
And not even just that, I mean, okay, here's something, here's something simple, okay? My work. I have, say, a particular service line, I have 100 agents, okay? They're taking X number of calls a day. And let's just make it nice round numbers, I've got 100 agents, they're each taking 100 calls a day, what is that, 10,000 calls for a particular client? If their volumes drop by 10%, I don't have, I have excess capacity in that staffing model. I've got now, you know, 100 agents working at 90% capacity. So, it's my understanding in very simplistic terms that we can evaluate things like master schedules across the district to make sure that we're capitalizing on, you know, the students and the services that we are providing, so that we're making sure that we don't have an inequity between one person, you know, teaching 20 classes throughout an eight-hour day, and I know I'm exaggerating on purpose, and one person teaching two. You know, I know, I remember, because it was an unpopular approach, uh, when Dr. LaTorre joined, he came in and made sure that even our coaches were going to be teaching, and that was not very popular at the time, if, if, if I'm wrong, you guys, you know? And so, you know what? It is now time to tighten our belts, and as frustrating and unfortunate as it is, maybe it's time we revisit that, have we done that, Dr. Carmen?
Yeah, and I think Dr. Gonzalez has some assistance here, but yes, they, they evaluate the staff per campus.
That wasn't a Dr. Gonzalez thing, Dr. Carmen, that was never an HR thing, that was an adm, that was a, uh, uh, the academic leadership kind of thing. I don't know, when principals are doing their master schedules, is HR helping them dictate what the master schedule is at their particular campus? And that's exactly why I don't think that's an HR question, it is.
President, I have, Dr. Carmen, so, several times a year, we do staffing with HR, where we look at actual numbers, I, eyes in the classroom, and, uh, we, we adjust our staff based on the numbers in the classroom. So, we have our EBB, which says how many staff each campus gets based on numbers, and we often adjust those. The beginning of the year, we're usually short-staffed, because they never overstaff the campuses, very rarely have I ever seen that done. And then what happens when we have the whites of their eyes in the classroom, we start to fill positions, and if the kids don't come, we've never hired. And so, sometimes we do have classes that are a little bit full until we do make those adjustments, but we do, um, we just had staff, I had staffing with my campuses last week, some of them are losing six teachers, some of them are gaining two teachers, so sometimes, most of the time it balances out, we find a home for everybody, but not necessarily where they began.
Dr. Carmen, you're telling me that there's no efficiency that we can gain by reevaluating our master schedules, that we do that on a continually, continuous basis, and that if someone were to look at our master schedules, there would be no opportunity there?
So, I can answer that too, a little bit, um, we did do some double-blocking of math this year, we did, um, take a hit in math during COVID, and for the secondary schools, we did double-block a lot of the sections of math, and we realize now we will not be able to have those FTEs, those positions for next year, so we are working our master schedule out, and in not every case, some students really do need that double-block, we have to provide that to them, but not every student in our middle school will now receive a double-block, because we know it's, it's a luxury we can't afford anymore, so we are adjusting our master schedule.
And those savings, then, that change is listed here, it's included here in this recommendation.
That I cannot answer as far as money goes.
This, this additional attrition of non-campus staff is on top of the regular work that they already do with the master schedules. Melissa meets how often with your principals on staffing and master scheduling? Enrique, Jen, and Kirk Arles?
Okay, do we, do we understand what the request is here? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm getting pretty frustrated.
I, I think.
Okay, because I see health insurance on this top line, and, okay, that's one of them, but I cannot in good conscience come in here and shove TRS down our employees' throat when that happens to be one of the things that attracts people to this, to this district, okay, when we have not been diligent enough in looking at every single thing? How can I in good conscience?
Yeah.
Mr. Nahara?
I want to add something to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Redada.
I, I just think that what we're, what we're saying is that we want to make sure that we eliminate every single possibility before the decisions that we make impact our teachers and our staff in such a negative way. I do, I do know that there is room for growth in the way that we're utilizing our staffs, especially in the high schools. I do ask that, that you look at everybody's schedules, um, teachers, coaches, band directors, are we using them at 100%? Look at the master schedule, and I remember going in and looking at it and saying, okay, wait, this teacher has this many classes, this, this coach has this many classes, why aren't we using them here? And understandably, I, I know that there's, there's, um, qualifications that they may not have to teach, but I think many times, some people, and, and I know this for a fact, I just don't want to throw anybody under the bus at this point, but there are people that are abusing of this, who when you look at the master schedule, the bottom half of their schedule is empty. Look at it carefully, there are improvements that can be made, and I know this for a fact. Please just revisit it and make sure that we are using every single member of our staff at, at, at their best, at the most capacity, so that we can, um, use our monies better. We don't have to, we don't have to, to, like Mr. Nahara said, cram TRS as the only option. We've spent almost three hours just talking about TRS and no real solutions, and that's the frustration, and I'm feeling his frustration as well, because that's, that's not it. We, we need to, we need to do better by our district, we really do, and right now, we're doing a disservice.
So, if I recall correctly, last board meeting, I had specifically asked that everything be put on the table, from top to bottom, from whether it's up here, all the way to the classroom, and I'm only seeing very selective information that's on here. Superintendent, I don't know, obviously you weren't here last board meeting, I don't know if you watched the board meeting from last, from last time, but this is where it's important that people are paying attention, when we specifically ask as a board, this is what we need, everything from the top to the bottom, we needed to look at every, you know, crack and crevice, and this is not, at least for me, this is not what I asked for. So, how can we, and that's why I just stood quiet, because I think at this point, we just need to table this, bring it out, you know, maybe in a week or two weeks, where we can have more detailed and finite information to make a better decision, because this is very selective information that was pitched to us, and it, again, it is being forced down our throats, TRS, 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 and to me, that's not fair to the teachers, that's not fair to the students, because it will negatively impact the students as well. So, I guess, we just need to move forward, table this item and revisit it, where we have more detailed breakdown information, not just very selective of what, what is here, and you guys need to come up, well, I'm going to, for now, I guess I got to direct myself to the superintendent, but they got to be able, Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm asking that your employees, your cabinet, that hopefully they can have everything on the laptop, if we ask for something, all the information is good to go, it's live, they can pull it out for us, now we'll get back to you in a couple of days, because we need, and I understand that there's going to be maybe situations where they're going to need some more time, which I get and I understand, but at this point, it's very vital that we get the information live immediately, as much as we can, right then and there, and if we can make a decision right there on bits and pieces of the whole thing, great. If we need to come back and revisit, then well, that's what we'll do, but at least we have more accurate and finite information.
Another thing, Michael, uh, the efficiency study shouldn't always only be done at a campus level, it also needs to be done here at the DSC.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir.
We, we need to make sure that there is no duplication of efforts up here, that positions aren't created just to put somebody in that place. A tax increase? No. The, the voters will have our head for that, because we couldn't control the budget, and it, it's not gonna happen, I would not support a tax increase, so you can take that off. There's ways to do things more efficiently, just like it's been brought up up here, and we need to do it, and like I mentioned the last time, you have to look in your own kingdom, you know, you just can't say, this is my kingdom, nobody can touch it anymore, we have to do things more efficiently now. I, I don't want to bring the position, but like, do we need two emergency management coordinators, you know, it's, can we afford it? That's, that's one of the things that I, I question, but it's, it's, these, these positions that have come up, that we've built, that we've, we've put in place over my three years, that I've questioned why they're here, and we need to look back at them and say, do we need them? You know? That's it, Michael.
Also, I think one of the other things that we asked for, and it didn't, it didn't come up, and Mr. Carmona, I'm, I'm not, I, I, I think I understand what your charge was, but we have asked Dr. Carmen, time and time again, Mr. Carmona, put together a proposal for us on our existing insurance, on, you know, a multi-year plan to help us save money, and we've asked to see that again and understand the impact, we've also asked to be able to see the impact from the employee health clinic, because we need to understand that, because if that goes, that's gonna go away with TRS, so any benefits that we're getting from there are gonna go away, so we need to understand that impact as well, and I didn't see that in this presentation, I also didn't see Mr. Carmona's multi-year plan, and I know that we may change this to it, and we may change this to it, because that also was part of the plan, we felt that we got too aggressive, so we stepped back a little, but it was a multi-year plan, to achieve a reduction in the healthcare expense, and haven't seen that anymore either, so...
The modifications to the existing plan were part of tonight's presentation that Mr. Carmona had to present on. I don't believe it was a multi-year, I think it was the, the HUB recommendations and the impact on the budget.
Good evening, again, yes, yes, sir, there's a slide
Okay.
in the health insurance presentation, where HUB is making a couple of recommendations to include a five-year plan.
Okay.
So yes, there is information provided.
And I believe the slide tells what those impacts are, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry that we didn't give you the opportunity to present that, but we'll get there.
It's okay, thank you.
Then I guess, are there any questions on what the request of this board is?
One other request.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Masia.
No, that's okay. 133-page spokesman screen, in my opinion, and truly, I kept hearing, it would not, I would not consider touching this. Truly, the goal in Socorroistie has been a collective effort, so truly bringing different stakeholders together to bring us what truly is the recommendation, because as we sit here, one doesn't know all. There's many individuals, and I know that we've gotten different recommendations from those that have come to the DICE, that they sound feasible. Have you all looked at them? Just today, we saw, you know, one of our, one of our leaders come and share possible savings that were not included here, is the left-hand talking to the right, not, not being critical, just truly giving a recommendation that we have to come together to create and propose a plan of how we're gonna tighten our belts. Everybody, I'm sure, knows one or two inefficiencies that we could bring together, that will truly get us within two to three years where we need to be, but if there's only one lens, we're not gonna see it. So that would be my recommendation, that we bring multiple entities from the campus, teachers, I mean, administration, you all know best, but it can't be the lens of one, and if I misunderstood that, I apologize, but that was my perception of what I saw today.
Okay. It was just a presentation, so if there are no further questions, if there are no questions from either Dr. Carmen, well, from Dr. Carmen on what the expectations of the board are for our next special board meeting or workshop, then we'll continue with new business, consider approval of administrator employment contracts for the 2024, 2025 school year. Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Good evening, Board President, Mr. Nahara, Superintendent, Dr. Carmen, and members of the board. Administration is requesting approval of administrator-certified and non-certified contract recommendations for 2024-2025 school year. This information has been verified by the Department of Human Resources and was presented to you in your packet, and will also include the additional information that you received tonight in your folder, so during the weekend, you received the complete list of the names, and we add, Claudia provides us for you, three more names that are included in your folder, so administration recommends consideration and approval of the item as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Nahara, seconded by Ms. Nahara. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Sure.
We were just discussing doing efficiency study. These positions would fall in that, do we just hold off on the vote until we get an efficiency study from Dr. Carmen, or do we just pass it now and tie the hands of the next person?
In, in discussion, I truly believe that the inefficiency would be with any vacancies moving forward versus those that we currently have here, so my recommendation, I agree with the efficiency study, but it would be through attrition in, in my, you know, my two cents.
Any further discussion?
I understand, but it's just, it's the position and not the, the person, I know some of these positions were created, and we hadn't had a chance to look at it, and that's my argument. If we postpone it a week or two weeks, it's not gonna hurt anybody's position, that's my argument.
We have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, one opposed, one abstain. Item passes, moving on then to executive session. Meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding status and possible resolution of TEA special investigations listed on the agenda and other matters related thereto, and to discuss superintendent transition contract, including either resignation or retirement of Dr. Ann Carmen, under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. The time is 9:06, the date is March 5, 2024.
The board is back from executive session. The time is 10:40 p.m. The date is still March 5th, 2024. And we do have a quorum.
Is Mr. Barata still here?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just wait for him to get back.
Excuse me. Okay, continuing with new business discussion, discussion and possible action regarding possible resolution of TEA special investigations as listed on the agenda. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Nahada, Dr. Carmen, members of the board. I gave you all the summary and we had a discussion regarding the proposal that we received from TEA, the Texas Education Agency, to resolve certain complaints that TEA is currently working on and that are under investigation. Those matters are identified in a proposed decree to order that TEA's lawyers forwarded to me and which I discussed with you all of the board. The key terms of the proposal, which will be outlined in a written agreement, that I'm going to ask that the board president and the superintendent be allowed to execute along with myself, will include the placement of one or more conservators appointed by the commissioner. Under the education code, section 39, 8.002.7, to oversee operations of the district and to assist the district. It will also include a final report relating to certain aspects of the pending investigations and a summary of the other allegations that TEA is reviewing. Those are the key terms, among others, including that special education matters are not resolved and that the commissioner will reserve the right to adjust accountability ratings for the district if necessary. Based on our discussion, it's my understanding that the board is willing to consider a motion to authorize the board president, superintendent, and myself to enter the agreement as proposed by TEA in discussed enclosed session.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve made by Ms. Macias, signed by Mr. Castellano. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Continuing then with 7B, discussion possible action regarding superintendent transition and contract, including either resignation or retirement of Dr. N. Carmen. Again, Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Nahada, Dr. Carmen, and members of the board. We had a discussion with Dr. Carmen regarding his pending, well, actually, his submitted resignation. It's my understanding that the board is inclined to accept that. Is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you.
We accept.
We also had a discussion regarding the transition and his status, which he is going to remain as superintendent until June 30th. Subject to a couple of directives from the board that we discussed in closed session, and we will follow up with those in a written directive from Mr. Nahada to Dr. Carmen. And so I would ask the board to approve Board President Nahada to issue a directive on the terms discussed in closed session to Dr. Carmen regarding the transition of his work to his new district.
My second.
Motion made by Mr. Barata, signed by Ms. Macias. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Blanco. There be no further business before this board. We are adjourning at 10:44 p.m. on March 5th, 2024. Thank you.